Good evening, thank you for attending tonight's public hearing. My name is Gary Slagel and I will serve as a hearing officer for this event. For tonight's meeting, DART has provided America Sign Language interpreter. We also have a Spanish interpreter available. Are there anyone present who requires a Spanish interpreter?
¿Hay alguien presente que requiera un intérprete en español?
All right. Tonight's public hearing will be divided into two parts. The first part will consist of a briefing or brief overview of the project by DART staff. Public hearing will follow presentation. And the instructions that were read by our attorney earlier on public hearing rules still apply tonight for this hearing. During the public hearing, we must follow these guidelines. Pre-registered speakers will make their comments first, followed by sign-in speakers in order received. Those who do not wish to speak may have written comments. All comments will be included in the official record for this evening. The DART board resolution has established a limit of two minutes per speaker. Speakers must address the topic of the hearing. Other subjects will not be allowed in this hearing. Questions, interchanges, and discussions are not allowed in the hearing. However, if a board member wishes to raise a question, or he or she may do so, technical staff will be available after the public hearing for questions. Now Hans Michael Ruth, Director of Service Planning, will make his presentation.
Thank you very much. My name is Hans Michael. I'm with Service Planning. I'd like to move forward with the required technical presentation to support the content of the public hearing that we're hosting this evening. This public hearing will include some potential changes that have been identified as necessary, possibly for implementation in 2026. These changes come from a variety of factors, including the board's action to establish the General Mobility Fund earlier this year, some formal requests by our DART member cities for additional services to better meet their respective mobility goals, some, the board's desire to limit year-to-year growth on DART's operating budget, and the, excuse me, closer?
Yeah.
Thank you. And the, some initial costs associated with the implementation of the new Silver Line service. These changes have been presented to the public at a series of pre-public hearing community meetings. They involve impacts to almost every DART service that is currently offered today and represent only potential service reductions. Another way to say that could be a worst-case scenario situation. Any final implementations will be subject to board action, also subject to any recommendations staff may present at August and later. So in order to orient us a little more, I'm going to briefly go over the potential modifications that are included in the content of the public hearing we're hosting tonight. The bus routes and the GoLink zones, which are our on-demand service that you see listed here, have been identified for potential discontinuation. Frequency changes that have also been identified as potentially necessary include light rail service being reduced in its frequency to 20 minutes on the peak service and throughout the day on the weekdays. Commuter rail, TRE and Silver Line, being reduced to 60 minutes all week long. And for DART express bus service, the frequent routes, which are the routes that operate most often per hour in our bus system, the most frequent ones would be reduced to 20 minutes all day, and some would be reduced further due to lower comparative performance, as well as some modifications in the evenings and the weekends. You can also see here a brief summary of some of the further modifications in the different categories of bus service. Our local bus routes, the route numbers from 100 to 145 would be reduced to 30-minute and 60-minute off-peak frequency. Local coverage bus routes, those numbers from 200 to 255, would be reduced from their current service of 30-minute peak, 40-minute off-peak, to 40-minute peak, excuse me, 30-minute peak, 60-minute off-peak. And then one of DART's express routes that is now proposed for discontinuation, Route 306, would be reduced in its frequency to 20 minutes. In addition, potential changes included in the material that we have solicited feedback at the public hearing on are new services requested by the town of Addison, the city of Plano, as well as some minor modifications not included in the public hearing that are being implemented sooner. Furthermore, the service area under which our ADA paratransit service operates has been identified for potential reduction from its current extent, which is equal to the DART service area, to a smaller footprint, which would be a three-quarter mile distance in either direction along the path of DART's bus routes and rail service. Fares are included in, modifications to fare policy is included in this public hearing, and that is some changes to the regional fare structure, some changes to the price structure for corporate annual passes, a change to paratransit fares that would be related to the reduction in service area that I mentioned previously, as well as a change in the system that we use to charge GoLink fares. These would transition to a distance-based fare and for those trips that are not to and from pre-designated DART rally points as their origins or destinations. This slide represents a calendar of recent and proposed future action relevant to the content of this public hearing. We have finished up, like I said, some pre-public hearing community meetings that will be detailed on the next slide. Today, we are hosting the official DART public hearing at the regular board meeting. And in the future, in August and later, we would take care of final recommendations presented to the board and request their action for planned implementation of service changes in January 2026 and then later in 2026 for fare changes. The pre-public hearing community meetings I mentioned, including 16 different meetings, we utilize both social and traditional media to accomplish this outreach. We enjoy a robust response from the public, some of which I believe you will hear about tonight, and we look forward to further direction from the board in this regard. With that, I will conclude my technical presentation. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Tonight's public hearing is recorded by a court reporter, so all comments received are a matter of public record. It is now something around 6:30, or 6:25. Tonight's hearing will begin according to the requirements set forth by DART's enabling legislation. This public hearing on the 2026 service and fare changes is now open to receive comments. To date, DART has received 696 written comments. All written comments received by the end of the hearing will be added to that total. We will begin to receive comments now. Please remember, there are two-minute limit on which to make your comments. If you require an interpreter, we will be granted twice the amount of time. Please keep your comments on the potential 2026 service and fare changes. I will now invite those who are registered to the podium. First, I have some elected officials, representatives that I'd like to invite first. First is Pastor David Wilson, followed by Byron Sanders. Pastor David Wilson.
Greetings to this board. My name is David Wilson. I am the president of a 90-year-old ecumenical organization in this city called the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance. We have worked with DART for years, making the progress that we have and that we enjoy today. It almost blows my mind that with needs so great in our city, growing like it's growing, about 487 people a day moving in our city, that we're talking about cutting and discontinuing services that complement the lives of individuals. I can't imagine that you want to cut routes for people who use our DART service to move from one side of town to another side of town just to make a living. I cannot believe in my wildest imagination that you want to cut back services that provide for people to get medical services, go shopping in food desert communities, individuals who need transportation, young people who catch three and four buses in the morning and in the evening to go to school. You're talking about cutting back after peak hour. You never see these students on school, on DART bus stops, trying to get home in the evening from being in school all day. And then you want to cut back services for those who are physically impaired? It just blows my mind that you can come and think that you're providing a service. I'm of the opinion that we need to think at DART, we need to think about what we can do to accommodate the people in Dallas rather than trying to make bus riders accommodate
Byron Sanders, followed by Crystal Patino.
Good evening. My name is Byron Sanders. I represent the youth. So I serve as a trustee with Dallas Independent School District. I represent District 5, which is in the southern side. It's the largest district within Dallas ISD. I've been in youth work for over 20 years. And when people think about transportation, oftentimes they think about the big yellow school buses. But the reality is, DART is a critical, critical infrastructure piece for the life of a young person. When we think about what it means for youth to be able to have access to opportunity, you can't do that without public transportation in this city. The reality is, we are with the kid from 8 to 3 o'clock during most of the year. There's a time called summer. There's a time called after-school. And when we're thinking about the life of a young person to get access to opportunity, DART is critically there. I'm not saying that because of something that I've heard, I'm telling you because of something that I know. The work that I've done, along with a lot of other people, not just in our schools, but in the juvenile system, young people getting access to opportunities to do things that would keep them out of all the decisions that we say we don't want young people to be involved in. In a time and a place where we're talking about, we want to reduce crime, we want to make this a safe city, why would we cull back the opportunities for young people to be able to go to jobs, to get to programs? DART is that. And DART is that not just for these young people, but when we talk about what our young people's adults in their lives need access to, for them to get to jobs, for them to get to the places and spaces where they need to get groceries and bring them back home, for young people to have access to all the kinds of things that pour into their opportunity grasp of that life that we keep saying is so important for them, you can't do that without DART. And I'm telling you, on behalf of Dallas Independent School District children and their families, we need this institution. Thank you.
Crystal Patino, followed by Eric Wilson. Is Crystal Patino here? I saw a lady moving toward the microphone, but it may not have been her. Eric Wilson. And when I call your name, if you would line up or get ready for your speaking position, that would be great. So Eric Wilson, followed by Jasmine Flores.
Good evening, DART board members. My name is Eric Wilson, and I stand here not just as a resident, but someone who deeply is connected to the working families, senior students, and every writer who rely on DART to live their lives with dignity. Let's be clear, you're calling the proposed service to change in fare increases to many of us is nothing more than short of a mobility economic opportunity and a threat to community health. Raising fares will reduce, or raising fares while reducing or reconfiguring service is a double blow. It's asking people to pay more for less, less reliability, less access, less equality. For many in Southern Dallas, our working-class communities, DART isn't just a convenience, it's a lifeline. It gets people to jobs, to schools, to doctors' offices, and to grocery stores. You talk about efficiency and budget balance, but where is the discussion about economic justice and shared burden? You say, "Show up, speak out, and be heard." Well, we're here, and we're saying, "Don't do it on the backs of those who are already stretched thin." Invest in this, improve service, expand coverage, keep fares affordable, don't penalize the very people who depend on you most. This board has the opportunity and the responsibility to listen not just with open ears, but with open hearts and conscience. Do the right thing, say no to fare increases and service cuts. Thank you.
Jasmine Flores, followed by Trey Arnold. Jasmine, are you here? Yeah. Okay. Followed by Trey Arnold.
Hello. First of all, thank you all for having this public hearing. My name is Jasmine Flores. I am the chief of staff for Commissioner Elba Garcia. I also am one of the young students, well, I was one of the young students that took the DART. I had to take two, three buses to the rail to make it to my job at 8:00 a.m. When I was 20, in my early twenties, didn't have a car and couldn't afford a lot of things, but I figured out my way and how to get through from all the way up north, making my way downtown to become a young professional and to eventually get to where I am today. My ask for you all is to continue to please make sure we're prioritizing our constituents, those that don't have the amount of resources that others do, and we're able to take part of this public service that has been a lifeline for so many, for so many years. Please, please keep the services that we currently have and keep the rates where they are, because we need to be able to ensure that our students get the education, that our people are able to go to jobs, get the resources and services that they need from all of our different county, city entities. And again, as a Dallas resident, as somebody who has been a DART writer and user for years, I ask that you please keep all of the services. Thank you.
Next speaker is Trey Arnold, followed by Senator Royce West.
Good evening. I'm just here on behalf of State Representative Tony Rose to deliver this. Thank you.
State Senator Royce West, followed by Lori Blair.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here with you today. Last time I saw most of you was down in Austin. And I understand the predicament that DART was in then, and understand the predicament that you're in now. And you have to make some tough decisions, but those decisions shouldn't be balanced on the back of people that can least afford it. You've got to make some decisions in terms of cuts that will help you to basically reconcile your budget, but let's make certain that the people in the southern sector don't bear that burden. For you see, I represent about a million people here in Dallas County. Most of them are in the southern sector, and a lot of them are transit-dependent. And so from that vantage point, in order for them to go to and from work, to and from school, they have to depend upon DART to be able to do that. And I know many of you have had the occasion to visit different parts of the southern sector, and I know many of you live in the southern sector. So I ask you that in continuing to be in a partner with state and with people in your transit jurisdiction, please consider, Gary, Nadine, Jane, all of you, please consider the impact, Randall, that it's going to have on the southern sector. Carmen, when you get ready to make decisions, Rick, about exactly what needs to be done. Michelle, thank you very much.
Lori Blair, followed by Frederick Haynes.
Before we start, can we let the people who are standing fill in the spaces instead of letting them stand? There's seats that are vacant that they can sit in.
Okay.
But my name is Councilmember Lori Blair. I am a newly appointed council member for District 8, the most southern district in the city of Dallas. I'm coming here appalled. I actually have something written, but I'm coming and speaking to you from my heart. I am appalled at the fact that DART is willing to take the most growable area of the city of Dallas and discontinue services. In my district, I have Cleveland Riley, which you want to completely abandon. I have Paul Quinn College, who you have someone sitting here representing, on the board that represents Paul Quinn College. I have UNTD, I have the inland port, I have Pastor Freddie Haynes, and one of the largest churches in my district. I have Antioch Full Gospel, and guess how the residents get back and forth to church on Wednesday and Sunday? They don't always drive, because you want to take, the city wants to take the cars away, so they get on the bus. One thing DART does not do is travel east and west. When I was a council member, and when I was sitting, I mean, a commissioner, sitting on the CPC with Mr. McGregor here, he would hear me fuss about, "DART not traveling east and west, you only travel north." And in my district, 54 square miles only has one DART rail line with two stops. That's all we got, and you want to discontinue services to an area that needs you the most. And as we grow, and we put in multifamily, and we put in, yeah, I got it, and we put in new retail. How are people going to get to retail if we don't have a bus and we can't get a car? How are we going to grow the block? You have 200 acres of area that's getting ready to be developed. How are we going to develop it and get people back and forth if we don't have any services? This is appalling, and I ask for you to reconsider.
Thank you.
Frederick Douglas Haynes, Senior Pastor of Friendship West Baptist Church, in the District of Councilwoman Lori Blair and State Senator Royce West. I'm standing here because I too am not just appalled, but I'm heartbroken because following our leaders, they recognize like you that real leadership solves problems and serves people without creating more problems than you solve. And what you are proposing right here creates problems on the backs of those who are already oppressed, as it were, by a system that denies opportunity. And so I'm asking for what I call a politics of empathy. Empathy-less politics basically reinforces oppression and is downright cruel. I'm asking for you to have empathy, empathy like I tried to have last week. I'm driving, I see a member, a senior member, who was waiting for a DART bus in the sweltering weather of Texas. Rain is about to come down. I could not let her stay there, and so I gave her a ride. She gave me her testimony, and my conclusion was, "But for the grace of God, there go I." I'm simply asking you to marry good business decisions with the politics of empathy. The politics of empathy and good business decision basically says that it's good business to serve those who need it the most and who also help to fund the success of DART. And so I'm asking you to do that in the spirit of someone we celebrate every January, Martin Luther King Jr. I've seen you at a lot of those celebrations. King died in the middle class, fighting for those who were in the underclass. Why? Because he recognizes that when you are blessed with privilege as a leader, you have a responsibility to lift those who do not have those privileges. Please don't cut services, and please don't raise fares.
Joyce Foreman, followed by Harrison Blair.
Good evening. I'm School Board Trustee Joyce Foreman, and I sat where many of you are sitting right now as a DART board member, former vice chair of the DART board. Just a few things to say. First and foremost, this is not the first crisis that DART has found itself in. But you are now asking the people that you went to to help save you before by creating more ridership, by getting additional funds, now you're talking about cutting their service. Does that make sense? I know many of you are very smart people, and the ones that I know on here that I've had interaction with, you also want to serve the people, because that's what you're here for, is to serve the people. Be clear, in today's climate and crisis, people are not going to have money to pay more. They're just not going to be able to do that. And then cutting the service of the people who are transit-dependent, people who are using your services because they don't have any other services to use, makes absolutely no sense. So my request is that you go back and rethink what you're doing. Make sense. There's a such thing as growing DART. We might need more member cities. There's a such thing as growth, but there is no way in the world I can sit back and watch you go on and cut the services for people who need them the most. And just a little bit about Dallas ISD, we partner with you to make sure that some of our children have absolutely an opportunity to ride the services. I ask you, rethink what you're doing. Thank you.
Harrison Blair, followed by Phyllis Silver.
Thank you, DART board, for the opportunity. My name is Harrison Blair, and I represent the Dallas Black Chamber of Commerce, and we were also in Austin. They made us wait till 2:00 a.m. to speak, but we waited because we thought that transit was so important to economic development. And let me just say, the Dallas Black Chamber of Commerce does not support any service cuts to the services in the southern sector. First and foremost, it's bad business to play in the faces of your most loyal customers, people that you have depended on and have depended on you. Don't break the symbiotic relationship. And dare I remind you, the pair of services that really take people who are disabled where they need to go are critical. People rely on those in all of the different districts that this DART board supports and the region. Dare I say, we have the 2026 World Cup coming to Dallas. How will we be able to support one match that's worth as much as a Super Bowl, and we have six of them, if we cut services? We need more, not less. Thank you.
Richie Butler, followed by Phyllis Silver. Excuse me, Phyllis, I had to bump you one.
Good evening. Richie Butler, Senior Pastor of the St. Luke Community United Methodist Church, rich in social justice. Rich in social justice work in history. I will be brief and just remind us of our responsibility. As a pastor, the book of Matthew reminds us, and I know we live in a society that's big on goats, but Jesus divided the sheep and the goats. And when it boiled down to it, He reminded those who thought that goat meant the greatest of all, reminded them that you need to be like a sheep, and that is to be a servant to others. And what Jesus said to them, because they wanted to know, well, why have you excommunicated us? Why did you put us over here? And He said, when you did it to the least of them, you did it to Me. And He said, and they asked the question, who is the least of them? And He said, those when you didn't go to the prisons, when you didn't go to the hospital, when you didn't take care of those who are the most vulnerable, you've done it to Me. And I just want to remind us on this evening, on this day, that we have a responsibility not to the big dollar supporters and those who have all the resources, but if we're truly committed to building a community that is vital and works for all, then we have to live into Matthew 25. And I just want to remind you, I know we think the goat is a great concept, but biblically, the sheep is where we want to be, and that is a servant to all. And remember that in your decision here. Thank you.
Phyllis Silver, followed by Curtis Green.
I'm Phyllis Silver of Addison. We as riders are on a roller coaster. Cuts during COVID, then service restored. In March, proposed changes. Also, Texas state legislative drama. Now large service cuts due to GMP and new services funding. This is DART's chance to look at priorities, as I do when budgeting. My priority is paying for necessities. I'd like to donate more to charities, but necessities come first. Riders are DART's priority. Riders voted for DART 42 years ago. Lower frequency results in ridership loss and decreased revenue. Riders would be late to destinations. Less frequency results in difficult transfers, and the most unsafe part of a trip is wait time when riders can become unruly. For the Silver Line to be successful, we need 30-minute headways. In COG's June public meeting, their air quality proposal was to increase bus frequency. DART is proposing the opposite. We would be going backwards. Let's fulfill DART's 40-year slogan, 40 Forward. Look toward COG and other funding sources. Also analyze internal efficiencies for cost savings. Addison's Route 305 has unique routing in downtown Dallas. With Route 239, walks to offices in darkness would increase. The paratransit changes would be bad for your most vulnerable riders. Please listen to their needs compassionately. As for rerouting Routes 235 and 239 in Addison, a reminder, this will be dangerous. Please provide a positive rider experience. Let's get off this roller coaster and have a smooth ride. Thank you.
Curtis Green, followed by Taylor Wright.
Am I good to go or do I wait?
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Curtis Green. I really like the phrase when it comes to transit, which is frequency is freedom. And we don't have very great frequency already. It's pretty difficult to catch the bus when it comes every 40 minutes or an hour. And making that an hour all the time makes it even more difficult. And like Phyllis said, that just hurts your ridership more, so you lose more money. As for the whole GMP and the system of redistributing funds, Plano's entire contribution to DART in 42 years is $1.8 billion. The Silver Line construction alone costs over $2 billion. How does it make any sense that we're giving money to them when the Silver Line isn't even done? And that doesn't even include operating budget. It doesn't make any sense. So we need better frequency, better service means better reliability. So if your bus breaks down, next one's coming soon. It's fine. Don't have the mental headache or checking the schedule. We need better frequency, not worse. Thank you.
Taylor Wright, followed by Diane Ragson.
I've been asked if you could get more individuals to fill these seats up. Is that possible?
To fill the seats up, that would be great.
We have a number of people out there waiting.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Diane Ragson. In 2018, community-based organizations and South Dallas residents established what is now known as the South Dallas Fair Park Transportation Initiative. In 2019, the South Dallas Transportation Initiative in collaboration with Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute conducted a survey of over 200 riders to document the need for an on-demand curbside transportation service within South Dallas proper. The need was well documented. The survey called attention to the lack of service for us who live in South Dallas Fair Park, precluding residents from getting to the grocery store, pharmacy, the bank, gym, the doctor's office. South Dallas Gold Link is critical also for our students. Within three months, the sustained use of the South Dallas Fair Park Gold Link increased from 20 rides provided within a week that were requested by 68 people to over 350 rides provided each week to over 60 people. The usage numbers remained strong, increasing the amount until a second Gold Link was necessary. And now you're considering the elimination of such. And now you're considering the exploitation and abuse of poor people and working-class people. Once again, those who have the greatest need are overlooked. Once again, those who have the greatest need are not served. We demand accessible, equitable, and affordable service for those who have the greatest need. Thank you very much.
Has Tyler Wright been up here or are you Tyler Wright? Okay, following you will be David Yacquenbain.
Okay. Hello and good evening, Board. My name is Tyler Wright. I'm a resident of Addison, Texas, and Vice President of Dallas Area Transit Alliance. On behalf of the community of riders I've been elected to represent, I want to speak firmly against any service cuts that are under consideration for any reason. But in particular, those set aside to fund the General Mobility Program or GMP. Look, I understand the political situation the agency is in. Just recently, a few suburban member cities held the agency hostage during the last state legislative session. I do not believe that most of the Board want to cut service to serve more selfish needs. But I do believe this GMP was an attempt to compromise with those that just tried to kill you. And it didn't work. You know what else didn't work? Their bill. I believe this is in large part due to energetic and vocal opposition that came from the riders like us. We showed up for you when it mattered most, and we'll show up every single time because we've got your back. Now, in the face of cuts that could be the biggest in DART's history, we're asking you to have our back. Don't bet on the GMP, bet on us. No caps, no cuts. Thank you.
David Yacquenbain, followed by Alexander Dunn.
David Yacquenbain, External Affairs Chair for DATA. Some Board members have mentioned they don't want cuts to paratransit. However, as we heard clearly from the disabled community, cuts to fixed routes will negatively impact the community you wish to protect. High frequency will be the key to your success and will be important in defending yourself in the future. The Silver Line is coming. Its success, its utility to the connected cities will be crucial to alleviating claimed inequities for the given cities like Irving and Plano and so on. Creating high-frequency connections to workplaces and DFW International will give you the ground to stand on in future legislative session. And a 5% GMP in two years will give DART a reputation more difficult to defend. People will forget the legislative and local political details of two years prior. They will see and hear of worsening service that is more difficult to defend than alternative solutions like improved frequency in services, a new Silver Line, TIRS, and other special development zones. This 5% GMP will not protect you. It will not protect you in the way you think. You will say it's compromise to the legislature, but the cities you're dealing with, they'll say it's not enough. I've heard no guarantee of ceasing legislative pursuits if the GMP passes. You have no guarantee that this will protect you, so why vote for it? Thank you.
Alexander Dunn, followed by Jan Sanders.
Good evening. My name is Alexander Dunn. I am the Secretary for the Dallas Area Transit Alliance. I just want to open up with, I recently saw a figure, actually, just today from, I believe, the Urban Institute. DART is the only major city transit network in North America that managed to increase its revenue miles traveled from before the pandemic. It's a huge accomplishment, one of a kind in a country that has the likes of New York and Chicago in it. But with these changes, we stand to lose all that progress and more. You already heard it once tonight, a few speakers ago, frequency is freedom. And let me say it again, frequency is freedom. We are taking away our riders' freedom to move about the region as they need to, to catch that transfer, to catch that bus that they need to take to their doctor's appointment, to get to school, to get to their job. How is DART going to live up to its stated goal to be the top-of-mind mobility solution for the Dallas area when our buses and trains are coming only once every 30 minutes? Who is going to take a Silver Line or a TRE that comes only once an hour? And don't forget the fact that these cuts will disproportionately affect the south of Dallas, all to appease, or attempt to appease, the wealthy suburbs who want to steal DART's money to paper over their own bloated budgets. You are dooming yourselves to a transit death spiral that has played out all too many times, but you will not be the only ones hurt by it. Your riders, everyone from the commuter to the student, to the youth wanting to go downtown for fun, to the elderly trying to get to their doctor's appointment for their health. Everyone will be left stranded by you in a region that is already far too hostile to see people seeking and needing an alternative to the automobile. These cuts make no ethical sense. They make no business sense. They make no political sense. They make no sense. You're going to hear it over and over again for everyone here tonight, from all walks of life. No caps, no cuts, no going backwards.
Jan Sanders, followed by Andrew Figoda.
My name's actually Andrew Flanagan. All right. Good evening. My name is Andrew Flanagan.
Microphone, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Flanagan. I am actually from the city of Rowlett. And I am here to state my opposition to the fare raises and service cuts. I oppose funding the GMP by service cuts because we shouldn't let DART riders suffer because Plano wants to take DART's money away from it. This General Mobility Program will effectively take out 5% of everyone's budget, including Rowlett taxpayers, and gives Plano and other eligible member cities 5% of that. Why should Rowlett taxpayer dollars be given to Plano and given a worse return on investment? Why should disabled people suffer to give Plano a bailout? Why should all taxpayers in this room have to suffer because Plano wants more money? I rest my case with that right there. Why should everyone in this room, the Board included, all have to suffer because Plano wants a rebate?
Jean Sanders, followed by Mark Kelso.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Sanders. I'm here on a slightly different note, but I fully support everyone who has spoken because paratransit has left a hole. It's personal that I'm speaking on behalf of a large segment of the community. Giving up driving leaves a big hole in our independence. I have two minutes to try to convince you to reconsider the decision to cancel our DART Rider Assist Program. I know. It wasn't promoted, it wasn't championed, and now it's dying before it's been given a real chance for success. It fills a hole in the DART system. Paratransit simply does not fill the need that needs 24 hours ahead to schedule. Weekends, paratransit doesn't work. 24 hours to pick up a prescription, you can't do it. If you have an airport, last-minute driving, night driving, Uber discount system worked. Shrinking budgets and inflation, retail Uber is unaffordable. You could get a $10 Uber drive for $3.00. $3.00, people. It worked. It worked. And most of you in this room didn't even know it existed because it wasn't told to you. You didn't even know about it. Please take this into consideration. I know it could have been cheaper than even using Paralink, and you didn't even know about it. This community deserves to have options. Please take this into consideration. If it's a simple funding issue, you need to reach out to Uber or to Lyft and talk to them. It would be a great public relations coup for them. There's something called Uber Health. Uber and Lyft could make this do something for our community. Thank you.
Mark Kelso, followed by Adrian Lewis.
Hi, I'm Russ Curry. Just here supporting the disabled, the blind, like I am. We need the spontaneity to get to our appointments, and we can't necessarily always get there and make an appointment with DART Paratransit 24 to 48 hours out. We need more flexibility. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Mark Kelso, followed by Adrian Lewis.
Good evening, and thank you for me allowing to chat with you all. My name is Mark Kelso. Okay, in 2013 to 2016, I was diagnosed stage four cancer. DART was my lifeline to get me my treatments, to my doctors, to my pharmacists, and several other things. Okay, you were my lifeline. Fast forward to October 31st of 2023, I had a stroke. Again, could not drive. Okay, I lived in Addison. I used y'all's services to get me to my doctors and everything that I needed. Those life-important, those life-saving items. Well, my kids decided that I was not stable enough to live on my own in Addison. And I ended up moving up with my son up in the Frisco, where there's no services. None at all. And I quickly realized what I was lacking. I was unable to spend time with friends. I had learned different methods to see them, which was Uber, Lyft, and all those others. So your mission, we create best-in-class mobility experiences that help people, communities connect and flourish. When I lived, okay, in your area, I believed that 100%. You proved it. Your vision, your first in mind mobility partner. Yeah, you were. You were, okay? And my move is prove that. What I'm asking you are the changes that you're making now and that you're proposing, live up to your mission statement? Do they live up to your vision? Do they live up to the strategy, especially Part B, to grow this into a... Do they live up to the strategy, especially Part B, to grow this into a world-class organization? Okay? I know how I can answer that. Living in Frisco with no services and hearing you guys are cutting them back and increasing fares. Your most critical people are those that have disabilities, and you're taking away services there. Thank you for your time.
Adrian Lewis, followed by Sharice Booker. Booker.
Good evening. I am Adrian Lewis, a resident of Collin County and a member of the Dallas Area Transit Alliance. If I had taken a car to come down here today, I would have spent 90 minutes staring at the back of taillights on 75. Instead, I took the red line, took me 40 minutes to get here. But if the frequency on that red line is cut, and if the buses that connect to it are discontinued, I won't be spending my time here in downtown, I won't even be spending my money in Frisco on groceries. All that traffic on 75 is not going away in the next two years or the next 20. We need DART. We have a system that works right now. Don't pull the rug out from underneath it. Thank you.
Sharice Booker, followed by Jasmine Khan.
Good evening. I'm Sharice Booker, a resident of Dallas, Texas. I have been utilizing DART for over, for all duration from my childhood up to 44 years of age now, and DART has provided me adequate resources to get to appointments, to make, to, that, that help my physical, mental, um, emotional, financial, and I'm asking for spiritual needs to be met as I'm, I'm requesting GoLink to be put in the set, to be added for, to include churches within the community in the, in the area, in their zone areas, such as Mount Valley, Mount Creek. Um, I'm asking for Dallas First Church to be added to that, to that, to that zone. Um, I put in a request formally with the, with DART, and they told me that it would be, um, that they would have to review it and let me know, but they never got back with me. And we would need, we, we won't, I, I know we don't need services cut, we need more, we need to increase more services to keep, to help, to help, to help all citizens of the, of our city.
Next speaker is Jasmine Khan, too, followed by Byron Murphy.
Hello, hello, how y'all doing, y'all? My name is Joshua, and I live in Arlington, Texas. The reason why I'm calling, the reason I'm here today is because DART, I need DART. We need DART in order to survive. I need DART in order to, in, in order to live life. Without DART, we are stuck in car dependency. I do not want to live in a world where I'm forced to run on a vehicle in order to make life work. I love that I can get on the TRE. I love that I can do life with, 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 with public transit. I'm, I'm, I'm against the, the general, the general mobility fund because we do not need to be giving 5% to a city that doesn't give a, that doesn't care about DART. They don't. I know they don't. They never have. Help the people in the city that cares about y'all. Even though I do live in Arlington, Texas, I'm talking for the people in my, in my neighborhood that use y'all. I'm talking for the people that use their e-scoots and e-bikes to get on via Arlington in order to use your service. Do not cut TRE through to one-hour headways. We need all-day 30-minute headways. We need all, all-day 20-minute headways. We need Sunday services. We need holiday services. DART needs, DART needs to ramp every single day. Why is it not ran on Sundays? Life happens in the city on Sundays. We need more service for DART and TRE and silver line. Thank you.
Byron Murphy, followed by Jasmine Khan, too.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Khan, too. I'm a Dallas resident and also a mental health professional here in Dallas. Personally, I use DART to help offset the wear on my rapidly declining vehicle, and I use the light rail to travel to Plano pretty frequently. However, I'm here today to make comments specifically about the disproportionate changes to the paratransit program and the proposed, um, service change. Although it might not have as high of a ridership as the bus and the rail system, make no mistake, this is not a small population or an easy write-off on a budget. Disabled people make up 20% of the population at least. DART has historically provided more than the ADA requires, and for many, for many people, paratransit services are paramount for access and inclusion. This is not a, oh, I'll wait a little bit longer for the next bus or drive more solution for disabled riders. It is a decision between can I afford to go to this doctor appointment or this doctor appointment? Can I afford to get my groceries, get to work? It's also not a hypothetical. Just from the one nonprofit organization that I'm here with, nine of our members will no longer live in the service area, meaning they will no longer be able to attend our program. Plano, which I know some board members here represent, is home to the first brain injury clubhouse in the state of Texas. That is what you are taking away, services from disabled riders. Our number-one barrier to people who come into our program, I don't have a way to get here. I've spent time on hold with DART trying to find rides for users who have been left stranded, complaining about rideshare drivers who have discriminated against our members, and yet I would still have this paratransit system than nothing at all. DART has the opportunity to be a model for paratransit services in DFW. Everything's bigger in Texas, right? Changes may need to be made to DART, but these changes will not be made at the expense of riders. Thank you.
Byron Murphy. Is there a Byron Murphy in the house? Maybe not. Oh, here he comes. People have been jumping line out near my friend.
Hey, I'm no hero. Hey, believe me, I'm a law, diet, excuse me, DART rider. I remember when y'all first drove up, and y'all had MCIs. Yeah. I've been riding all my life. I never rode a car or, or, or truck. So, hey, now where I live, I don't, I don't have no service other than DART. And believe me, my family lives way, way where the buses don't even go. So that's, the only one I go, as far as I go is Plano, then I gotta go meet one of them when they pick me up in a special van for my journey. Because they live in, on the Oklahoma borderline. I mean, when y'all had NCIs to now. And I believe, I've been a law DART rider since y'all drove up. But if you take it away, it's gonna kill me. Because I have no, no, no other transportation. I have seizures, I have a lot of stuff, you know? And, uh, excuse me. But yeah, I just gotta let you know the good sign right here. That's all, that's all I gotta say. You have a nice day. Nice, good night. Thank you.
Rick Roth, followed by Bernard Brown.
My name is Richard Roth. I live in central Plano in the 75075 zip code. I use DART daily. I use all the services. I am a 20-year brain cancer survivor and former planner for the city of Dallas. I am now unable to drive or walk long distances in extreme weather due to epilepsy, fatigue, short-term memory, confusion, and other issues related to brain injury. I'm a long-term member of the Brain Injury Network Clubhouse in Plano, where Jasmine Khan, too, is a staff member. I intend several times weekly, because I am fortunate enough to be able to navigate non-paratransit dedicated transit services on a limited basis, GoLink has been an absolute game-changer for me and a lifesaver. Fellow Clubhouse members use transit and paratransit daily. Some will have their access cut off now from GoLink and paratransit due to their location and the increased costs from new distance-based fares. The fare increases may not seem like a lot of money, but many paratransit users are on a fixed income and will see their transportation costs double. For instance, ADA customers that work daily and take trips for errands could see increased monthly costs on the order of $1,000 per month or more for work trips in errands and much more if they venture outside the narrow three-quarter-mile-proposed fixed-rate-service area, especially if those individuals are using paratransit to get to work and other personal trips further from fixed routes. This reduction in the net disability income affects their ability and desire to work, and it will cause isolation and reduce community participation. I'm concerned about the increase in paratransit fares and the reduction in the service area because you're proposing to almost double the fare from $3.50 to $6, depending on the time of day. It will make it much more difficult to get to doctor's appointment therapy, and, um, please don't take, put additional burdens on our members with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernard Brown, followed by Brenda Ove. Bernard Brown.
Good evening. My name is Miles Logring. I live near Garland and Buckner. I now use DART once a week to go to that support group was mentioned earlier. I used to use the bus and train regularly throughout the week, but things have changed. The proposed changes, uh, I'm concerned because some people are not able to walk, and you need, others need to walk, um, farther, or you, some people live here and that area is going to be, not used, serviced anymore, so they have to walk two miles, and that's ridiculous. They can't get from their house to where the bus train stop is and get to where they need to get by the time they need to do it. So you're handicapping people all over. I am fortunate in that I live in an area that is not going to be harmed, but I have several friends who are being harmed because of service cutbacks. I'm not happy to pay the extra fee, but, um, I don't have a say in the matter, but I, that's good enough for now. Thank you.
I don't know if Bernard Brown is here, but apparently no Bernard Brown, so I'll move on, and we'll do Brenda Ove. There she is, okay. Number 16, there you go.
Hello, I'm Brenda Ove, and I'm a DART rider, and I hate to see it go away, and I need it to go to the doctor and church and shopping. That's the only transportation that I have. And I appreciate it if the fare don't go up anymore. Thank you.
Paula Neal, followed by Richard Reynolds.
My name is Pamela Neal, and I really do greatly depend on DART paratransit. And my neighbor and I, we go to church together, and for a while, I did try to use a city bus, but it is not handicap accessible. It just was too hard on me, even when I used to walk with a walker. But yes, I, I just don't want the prices to increase because it's really hard to afford $3.50. Me and Brenda, we split the cost together, and our churches, you know, helped us out, but they're not gonna be able to help us out anymore. And the city bus, you know, it's just not handicap accessible. I just greatly appreciate DART paratransit. Please don't go above the fares. Please keep the services. Don't cut back. Thank you.
Richard Reynolds, followed by Shannon Adams.
Richard Reynolds, somebody who has been in the DFW area for 43-year and eight-month. That should be enough tax to say service should be given for trust. 43-year and eight-month. I will say what I will say on the 19th directly to the paratransit in Richardson. But these taxpayers definitely do not need to see price increase for more first-class dress codes. How many of these people even know their own teammates? 10 drivers out there. Do they? I don't see any of them stepping forth. You do not need to stoop as low as what Fort Worth became in my 13 years paying taxes over there. It got to the point that even coming to the public hearings, I had to have an attorney because they do not want to hear this Yankee mouth run. If I'm out of line when I say the service does not need to be cut, please, somebody take these keys in his locker on White Settlement in Fort Worth that I clear out tomorrow, 10:11. I will let you take these keys and burn every copy of Bible in there across the American spotlight on national TV. Anybody want to take me up on that, or do they just need to start to use common sense?
Shannon Adams, followed by Stephen Patrick. Shannon Adams, okay? Followed by Stephen Patrick.
My name is Shannon Adams, and I've been riding DART since 2021. I live by myself. I also have seizures, and I have dyslexia, among other. If I ride the regular DART, then I will end up having a heat stroke. I've already had one by doing that. You're putting all of us in danger by cutting rides out. By passing this, you are basically gonna kill someone, or you're gonna end up hurting. DART, at the very end, will be ending up hurting themselves. No one else, DART will be hurting themselves, even though y'all think it's the good thing. I know a lot of you think this is a good idea to pass. Y'all have cars, we don't. You're literally cutting people out of their dialysis that will end up in the hospital or dead if they miss one dialysis. My father is on dialysis. He can't even miss one. I can barely walk right now because I ended up having a surgery. I might have a pinched nerve and not feeling parts of my right leg. It's hard for me to even walk even half a distance. I know this alarm's fixing to go off in the school and drive me crazy, but the thing is, I'm a fall risk and most of, almost every single one of these people that rides DART. I live in Plano. Yes, Plano is being a very bad headache. God, I wish I'd never lived in Plano. I came from Oak Cliff. So you cutting out the regular buses, you cutting out the regular DART paratransit, GoLink GoLink right now, I have to walk two and a half blocks. I have a service dog that's in training. I have been cussed out. I have been left. I have been even canceled the rides without my knowledge. I have, I'm also a student. You're cutting out people's education as well. UTD only has one bus, the 238. You're one to cut out completely. How are people supposed to go to universities? How is people supposed to end up making it? I barely struggle. I have, after I pay my bills.
Your time's up.
Sir, I know you're saying time, but listen, I'm paying my bills. I have less than $300 to buy groceries. I barely paid $3.50. So you raising these rates are very fat. It does not need to pass. As far as it's been agreed, people have signed it, people also agree not to raise these rates.
Stephen Patrick, followed by Brooklyn Nguyen.
Good evening, Board. My name is Stephen Patrick, and I live in the Riley area. I'm a disabled veteran, and I'm representing several of my disabled veteran community. And I've been riding Dart paratransit now for many, many years, and it was brought to my attention that we're going to go up from three, well, it was proposed to go up from $3.50, and where I live is supposed to go up all the way to $10 a trip, a trip, per trip, and then you got to come back home. That's another $10. That's $20, and depending on how far you had to go, it could be more than that. I don't have it. I don't have it. I served my country. I did the best I could, and I come back. I'm a disabled veteran, and now Dart's going back up. They're making more money, and they're making more cuts. Thank you.
Brooklyn Nguyen, followed by Paul Caskel.
Good evening, Dart Board and staff. My name is Brooklyn Nguyen, and I'm a student at the University of Texas at Arlington and a resident of Murphy, Texas. Some of you may recognize me from 2024's Bike to Work Day event, where I won the Dart branded bicycle. I bring this up because the astute of you will recognize that neither my home nor my work are within the Dart service area, and that's my point. Every day that I attend class, I'm an exec, I am inexorably connected to the cities that I transit through, through Plano, Richardson, Dallas, and eventually Irving. I watch out of the window at the shops to patronize restaurants to dine at and places and parks to visit. Despite not being a member of any members, uh, being a member of any Dart member city, my travels reflect the broader mission of this agency, regional connectivity. It has been previously established that some of the most vocal proponents of the service cuts are failing in this understanding and center their concerns on providing the travel that, on improving the travel that occurs only within a city's limits. As a commuter by way of light rail, the T R E, and my personal bicycle primarily, and secondarily of many bus routes, my entire means of transportation unravels under these cuts. Whether I'm going to the doctor, to a doctor's appointment, socializing with friends, or even the mundane act of grocery shopping, I am going by transit, not out of necessity, but of pleasure and want. I ask you now this, what next? What happens when the frequency cuts drive away all riders except those who have no other, who have no other choice, and you deride those who are left? Will you use these, the induced decline to justify further cuts when traffic on the roads continues to cripple rush hour and the suburbs continue to ask for more and more funding? What then? Thank you.
Paul Caskel, Paul Caskel, followed by Ms. Rapp.
Good evening, Board members. I would love to thank you for attending this meeting. Anyone who does not actually recognize me, I have been brought to several of these meetings because two years ago, I was one of the people who actually did the survey research of how to improve things in this city, and yes, I said, maybe we should increase the price just a little bit, but that means we also increase how many times the bus comes. That also means, and I'm going to say to everyone here, I want you to look around you and see how well behaved everyone is. This is because we have increased the police officers, increased our quality control. You go onto a train and you sit next to people who do drugs next to you. You go on the buses and people get on to say, I can't pay today, so they curse out the bus driver. They throw drinks at people. We need more quality control and increase the frequency of the bus routes and trains because I guarantee you, if you don't, all the stuff I'm talking about that needs quality control, it's just going to increase more and more and more because now you're actually hurting the people who are paying all day and who here needs more time waiting in the sun to get your bus just hit the road. Thank you.
Ms. Rapp, followed by Liam Crowley.
My name is Ms. Lynn Ray, ID number 158692. I am, or should I say was, the ambassador for Dart paratransit. Transdev called me. I didn't call them. They thought they had a puppet on a string, but the only thing I keep telling people that is that I have a value is my integrity. And my dad always told me, and I believe everything my dad told me, if a man does not possess integrity, they are not to be trusted. I, I, I agree with everything that everyone have said so far, and I want to make this, I want to say this on my behalf personally, which I, it applies to everyone else, but I agree with about the implement, uh, not to increase the fare because as you can see, I'm disabled. None of us are perfect here, and I'm going to speak about me. If I was perfect, I would not have 44 medical diagnosis. If I was perfect, I wouldn't have had to give up my car. If I was perfect, I sure would not be taking Dart paratransit because I wouldn't even recommend it to Satan himself and the imps, his imps. If I was Dart par, if I was perfect, I would be over Dart. I was, would be running Dart paratransit with a team of people that possessed integrity. Think, I've heard what people said about the people on dialysis, it thought, and this is people life that's in jeopardy. They could die. I have had roommates, not roommates, but neighbors die. I have had, knowing people personally that die. I have had also, I will not be riding back with Tony, the driver, because he did not follow protocol. He did not lock me down when I got on the van. He come, he arrived at my apartment with an attitude. He went over every bump, and you know how the streets are downtown. He was driving reckless to me, he was, and if I have to drive this all the way to Hampton and 67, my chair, I would, so be it. And I will leave with you again.
Thank you.
Second Chronicle seven and 14 says, if my people which are called by my name would humble themselves, I'm trying to pick, does someone help me get my paper off the floor, please? Would humble themselves and praise my face, turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven? I will forgive their sins and heal their length.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I still love you.
Liam Crowley, followed by John Mellon.
Good evening. My name is Liam Crowley, and I live near Centerport Station. As you've heard, it will continue to here tonight, these proposed cuts were nothing short of disastrous. Having the frequency of the T R E to once an hour is absurd. I wish I was standing here advocating for service improvements, but instead, we're fighting just to keep what we already have. Hourly trains are unforgiving on a Saturday, and I'm sure you know that feeling if you've ever looked at the display board and saw that your next train's in 50 minutes. Expanding this exercise of frustration to the weekdays and not just on Saturdays is untenable. And then while these cuts are going to create devastating gaps in frequency, the capacity of these trains is also going to plummet. If your plan is to cut these trains in half, are you counting on those people that ride the other trains just to stop riding? How are you going to increase the capacity of these trains when you're running half of them now? No caps and no cuts, and especially not the T R E.
John Mellon, followed by Madison McNair.
Hi, good evening. Um, I just have a quick question. I kind of have a feeling, uh, does anybody here actually want these cuts and fare changes? No? Okay. All right. I'm in the right place. Uh, good evening. My name is John Mallon, and when I cannot use public transportation, I drive a 2000 Chevy Silverado. It's big, it's ugly, it has a Mag mount ham radio antenna in the back so I can monitor the local repeaters distractedly. It has a Viva Terlingua bumper sticker on the dented front bumper and a Texas State Park sticker in the back. It gets 18 miles per gallon on a good day, and the registration is out of date. I'll fix that, I swear. Uh, the mark of a good transit system is when you can walk to a bus stop and confidently get where you're going without having to plan your whole day around it. A missed train should not derail your whole day. The plans on the table are not sound transit policy. I'm sure you all know that by now. If you reduce the frequency on the Dart system, you can look forward to sharing the road with my junk bucket, countless other beaters, jalopies, clunkers, and rust buckets. No cuts, no caps. Thank you.
Madison McNair, followed by Heather McNair.
Hi there. My name is Madison McNair. I'm chronically ill, disabled, mentally ill, and neurodivergent. I use multiple different mobility aids to assist me in getting around and cannot drive or use the typical city bus system. I'm a native Texan, born and raised in Dallas, and I'm an accessibility advocate who has worked directly with our Parks and Recreation Board to make our parks more accessible. I have multiple genetic conditions causing almost all of my body systems to be affected with over 25 diagnosed conditions, and I have to go to multiple appointments a week for life sustaining and life-saving medical care that I would simply be unable to attend if you shrink the area service for the paratransit system or charged more. The sidewalks in Dallas are in such disarray and disrepair that I cannot even go a mile from my house in my wheelchair without having to go into the road to reach my destination. Our sidewalks are simply not traversable, meaning we must rely on Dart to reach our destinations. I cannot use the typical Dart, Dart bus system due to the accessibility to reach the bus stops or the bus themselves being inaccessible. I also have symptoms from brain injury causing confusion, memory loss, and lack of coordination. For every chronically ill, disabled, mentally ill, neurodivergent, low-income, and working class residents, and every other person in our community who rely on Dart for our appointments, our schooling, our shopping, frankly, for everything we do, please do not implement these changes to the paratransit system. It will make our lives even less accessible and equitable than they already are if you do these. The marginalized communities in our cities, in our city will begin to face even more obstacles and challenges if you do this. And in closing, I would like to say, to promote equity and inclusivity, you must also be prioritizing accessibility and affordability. No caps, no cuts, no changes.
Heather McNair, followed by Jade Brodnix.
Thank you, Board, for having us tonight. My name is Heather McNair. I'm mom to three disabled adults, also their primary caretaker, none of which, none of the three can drive, so we are dependent on, they are dependent on these, the paratransit and the bus system as a whole to be able to get from point A to point B. One of the biggest things that we advocate for when we have kids or relatives that have a disability is for their inclusion in the community. That's what it all boils down to. These people have amazing things to contribute, as you just saw my daughter, um, they have amazing things to contribute. They won't get that opportunity if they don't have a way to get from point A to point B. They're mostly living on a, we're not even talking about a fixed income, we're talking about less than $1,000 a month. If you guys go up to $6 per ride, it, for somebody that works five days a week, you're looking at 25% of their income would be going to transportation. They can't do it, and so then they can't work, or they can't go to school, or they can't go out and see the other people in their community and be able to give back to them. I also want to just give a huge shout out to every single person that came tonight, but especially our disabled friends. Every single one of them, this is a huge effort to make it out to something like this, to sit and wait, to speak, and I hope y'all know and can, can recognize just how incredible it is that every single one of them are here, and they're just fighting for their ability to be a part of every day, just like we all do and all we all tend to take for granted sometimes. So thank you for your time.
Jade Brodnix, followed by Joshua Lent.
Hi, I'm Jade. I live in South Dallas, and I'd like to address what feels like multiple realities that I live personally daily. As a new homeowner and an intentional South Dallas transplant, I live in a poor area that is on the early side of gentrification, and I see seniors with limited mobility going to doctor's appointments, the working poor with limited income going to work, and friends of mine choosing to uplift themselves by going to Dallas College for school. These friends and neighbors use Dart GoLink and Dart buses quietly and reliably. Without Dart, the demand becomes much higher for neighbors to be neighborly, to adjust schedules, pick people up, and drop them off. Not only do friends feel like an inconvenience for asking for rides, but they lose autonomy in the process of asking. Not to stereotype, but I found that those who grew up impoverished, for them, there's often an unspoken dignity in being able to go somewhere to better your life, like a doctor, school, or work without strings. I've also found through my commitment to my church that very few wealthy people are able to sacrifice their time and sacr, and resources to reliably serve others. This is precisely where Dart is needed. Without Dart providing access to basic human needs, the neediest of areas become less able to stabilize, posing more of a threat to a region that's already facing housing instability and the associated issues. Meanwhile, my role with the town of Addison, an area that's largely stable but needs reinvestment, is to manage the planned growth so that our town continues to flourish. As you know, our TOD relies on Dart as its anchor. Whether the system is used for survival or enhancement, the positive impact is enormous. I'm here to state my opposition to the service reductions, particularly paratransit and GoLink, and ask that you maintain service in the highest need areas like South Dallas. Thank you.
Joshua Glenn Bell, or something like that, followed by Deborah Breitman. Go ahead, sir.
I'm a blue collar worker living in East Dallas, and like so many other working-class people across North Texas, I depend on Dart for my daily commute. The changes proposed in the general mobility program would be an assault on the most vulnerable and the most structurally disadvantaged in our society. The increase in paratransit fares, the elimination of bus routes, the elimination of the South Dallas GoLink zone, the reduction of light rail and bus frequency, each of these will produce nothing but more pain and less opportunity for those already pushed to the margins. And for what? The privileged few of Plano, Irving, and Park Cities will not be satiated by a 5% cut. Their petty sense of grievance will not be quelled by this program, for what they seek is the total elimination of any public service which primarily benefits poor and working class people. At a time when all such programs are coming, coming under similar attack at the state and federal levels, you, the members of the Dart Board, must stand up for working people by rejecting any and all cuts. To fail to do so would make you complicit in our continued immiseration. Thank you.
Deborah Breitman, followed by Candace Watts. Candace Wicker, okay? Wait, Wicks.
Okay, who's going next? Candace Wicks is right here.
Candace Wickar can go ahead if you're ready, and then we'll get Deborah after that.
My name is Candace Wickar, and I do serve on the PAG Board for DART. I'm also the former Teacher of the Year for Dallas Independent School District 2007-2008. I've been to school, I've watched, I have observed, and now I'm ready to comment. First of all, I can see by the way that we were treated in terms of the wheelchair accessibility for us to even get into this room, the plans were not in place, and we were taken out of order, and it's not right. So when you do these types of meetings where you know the public is going to be here, don't dismiss us because we're in a wheelchair, because five years ago I was walking, I had my car, I had a 30-year career in teaching. However, one day, this happened to me. It could happen to you, just like it happened to me. So don't dismiss what we say. There's a spirit of dismissiveness when it comes to certain people that work within your staff. I have experienced it tonight. I have experienced it tonight. I had to speak on that before I could even get to the deductions of transit services. And let's look at what we already know. If you read the accommodation, we already know if you live south of the Trinity River, you're going to always be at the front when it comes to cuts. It is not fair, it is not right. Again, like I said, it might be you. You might have to join me on a DART paratransit bus. Imagine that you can't touch the ground with your feet because you don't have it. Imagine that you can't go to the restroom. Think about these choices that you're making. They are affecting our lives and the quality of our existence.
Deborah Brigham, followed by Letitia Evans. Is Deborah, is Deborah here? Letitia Owens.
Thank you for having me. I am Letitia Owens. I am the founder of Where Are You Homeless Outreach, and I've been a part of the Homeless Commission with the City of Dallas for the past seven years. And for many in our community, these buses are not just a convenience, they are a lifeline. Every day, thousands of people depend on DART buses to get to work, to school, to medical appointments, and to care for their families. I am speaking for the single mothers who juggle jobs and childcare for seniors on fixed incomes, for students striving for a better future, and for those who simply cannot afford a car. From my understanding, there are four top leaders that receive large bonuses here, and I would love for you all to receive a notice that you would receive that bonus no longer, and see how you felt about that, because that's what you're telling us. When you talk about cutting routes or raising fares, you're talking about making life harder for the most vulnerable among us. You're talking about a mother who will have to walk miles with her children in Texas heat. You're talking about a worker who may lose their job because they cannot get to their shift on time. You're talking about neighbors who will be isolated from the community resources they need to survive. Public transportation is not a luxury, it is a necessity. It is the engine of opportunity, equity, and dignity. When you invest in buses, you invest in people. When you keep fares affordable, you keep doors open for everyone, not just those who can pay more. I urge you to consider the real impact of these decisions. Please do not make it harder for those who already face so many challenges. Keep our routes running, keep our fares fair. Stand with the people who need you the most. In Jesus's name, amen.
Dr. Sharon Middlebrooks, followed by Jose Chavez.
Hi, my name is Jose Chavez. I'm a DART paratransit rider. All I want to say is the fare just recently went up to $3.50, and now you are proposing a $6 fare, that's unbelievable. I live on a limit income, and if this fare increases goes through, goes through, I simply won't be able to afford to use DART paratransit anymore. I'll be forced to find another way to get around, which is extremely difficult. Please reconsider this increase. It puts too much strain on my riders, like me, who depends on this service, to live our daily lives. Thank you.
Dr. Sharon Middlebrooks, followed by Bradley McDonald.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. I am Dr. Sharon Middlebrooks, President for the Dallas NAACP. I come before you this evening first and foremost to let you know that we're in direct opposition to the increased fares and the reduced services. I would like to impress upon you, as the Board, to please reconsider and rethink. Let's do this from a business acumen standpoint, and by that I mean, let's put people before politics. These people that are here, especially the disabled, it took a lot for them to get here, and a lot of things that we take for granted, they have to go through so much. The vulnerable, the disparities, as we talk about southern sector of Dallas, the disparity, the most vulnerable. How do we get to the better-paying jobs if we do not have transportation? The city approved $546 billion for Kay Bailey Hutchison. We're expecting FIFA to come here, yet our transportation, if it decreases, we're doing the city and ourselves a disservice. So I ask you, please reconsider and think more about the people than we think about the politics behind it. I thank you, and I yield the resort of my time back to you. Thank you very much.
Bradley McDonald, followed by Carol Dunn.
Yes, my name is Bradley McDonald, and these fare changes will affect my life greatly, because right now I go to see friends on paratransit, and that's going to cut out what I do, and I'll have to pick which activities I don't do and which activities I do do. And it's not right that people are on fixed income and you're going to come and take half their income to pay for paratransit. That's not right. Find a different way to do this. Do not cut services, and do not raise fares.
Good evening. My name is Carol Dunn, and I have been riding with DART paratransit for like 11 years. I was excited when I first found out that the service was offered to our individual with a disability that hindered us from catching the bus or rail system. The service area was broad and the fare was good. Most of us ride the paratransit, or seniors and any person with a disability. Most of us are on SSA or SSI, which is a fixed amount that does not change until the next year, only if the government decides to give us a raise. Everything has been increased except our income. Then if they decide to give us a raise, then our medical insurance costs increase also. So if DART Transit, uh, TransDev increased, it offers up to $6, then narrow our service area, that is not helping us, period. Then we will have to pay more for less service, which is not going to help DART TransDev to make more money off of us, because we will not, we'll no longer be able to afford to ride to the places we need and want to go to, including church for some of us. You gave us freedom to be independent, and now you just want to snatch our independence away and leave us isolated in our homes again, and want us to be happy about it. Well, we are not happy about that at all. So please consider us, since this service was created for us. Help us help you. Thank you for your service.
Diana Clark, followed, you know, I called Deborah Brehman.
Hello, DART, I'm back again. I am so glad to let you know my report on the last time I was here. Y'all been working. The issue I had with the Goodwill and the Parrot, your staff's been working, they got it taken care of. Not to mention the bus stop in South Dallas, they did it. I was amazed to receive a call, hello, this is DART. I was shocked, but I am so happy that y'all are working. I know y'all working, because the last time I was here, I was number one. Look over here, your staff been working. All these people came here, y'all been working, I'm so happy. But let me tell you why I'm here. I'm back again in South Dallas, I live in South Dallas, I looked at that map. Why y'all continue to messing with South Dallas? Sunny South Dallas, we need all of you. I challenge each one of you to get on the bus. Just get on it. Get on number 109, call GoLink. Come with me, I'll pay the $3. And see what those drivers are doing. They're doing an excellent job. Those men, you put two GoLinks in our area, they come out, they treat me like a queen. Do you want them to lose their job when they're picking up 15 to 20 people a day? They are so wonderful. They come down, they take that ramp down for me. I don't want to walk to the next bus stop. You took two buses out of the community. I don't want to have to walk five more blocks. Some of us cannot do that, but we love GoLink. Remember when y'all cut those two buses from our area? 75, write that down, 75223. You cut the buses from us and told us to walk five blocks. How do you know we can walk? But anyway, last thing is, I want to see a bumper sticker on the bus. We love South Dallas. I want to see that on one of the buses. Number 23 will be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope we get out of here soon, because DART rides to midnight.
Is Deborah Brigham here? I've called that name a couple times, maybe I pronounced it wrong, but is there a Deborah There she is.
Hi, it's Deborah Brigham.
Okay.
My name is Deborah Brigham, and I am just asking you to reconsider the rate hike. This week I had to catch, I will be on DART four times, and if the rate hike went through, that would be $48 for me to pay for one week of going to the doctors and going to, coming to this meeting. But sometimes I have to go to the doctor at least three or four times a week. I don't take dialysis, I just have so many specialists that I have to go to because of my, my different illnesses. And I'm just asking you to please think about not just the people in South Dallas and the other, the students, but the seniors that are in my category and were disabled, and were in wheelchairs, and we need DART paratransit. Thank you.
Alvin Owens, Alveron Owens, there we go. Tell me how to pronounce that, please.
Alberene, A is in apple, L, V is in victory, A-R-E-N-A. The initial N and last name Owens with an S. Some people think what's good for the goose is good for the gander. But what's good for the goose is not good for us. It's not good for us. Not good for us. Damn the gander. Damn the gander. And I'm speaking for those that have gone before me this evening, and I'm going and speaking for those that couldn't make it. I was told when I moved to Dallas downtown that this was going to be the New York City. But New York City has their transportation. They have neighborhoods, they have families. They weren't moved from farms to come up in the concrete jungle. They're not isolated. And I don't know if we have a sociologist in DART, or the psychologist in DART, but they're talking about isolation is killing people. We have people right now, they're saying, life or death. This is really life or death, ladies and gentlemen of the jury. Life or death, and give us some respect. Some people are saying, it doesn't make any difference, they've already decided. Have you? Have you already decided? Give us some respect, is all I'm here to say this afternoon. Give us some respect, and just like we have seen on television and wherever you've been if you've been on the jury, that's what you're doing today. You are deciding whether or not these people sitting in this audience and the people that they represent are going to have life or death. You will be deciding whether or not they will have the death penalty. Yes, you are, and I'm sorry not to modulate my voice, but somebody's got to speak for these people. Somebody's got to speak for them. And I prayed before I came before you, please, God, help me to say the words in my mouth and the meditations of my heart. So this-
Thank you. Kenneth Newton, followed by Yeann Plodney.
Yeah, you doing all right? I'm speaking to you as a New York City retired transit. What you're doing is Transit 101. You are cutting the service-
Would you please bring the microphone, Lord?
I'm speaking into it, sir. All right, look, don't try to storm me, man. All right, thank you. You are raising your fare and you're cutting the service. That's Basic Transit 101. What I'd like to know is, when you start your three-quarter service area, are you going to be on time? Because the buses then should be stumbling all over each other. I shouldn't have to wait, have somebody telling me, well, your ride is late, okay? And with these fares that you're coming up with, I want to know whether I'm going to be paying $12, $20, or even maybe $32, okay? Because I was here before, and I would try to talk to you people about the ADA, but nobody wanted to listen, but I see you do know about the ADA. That is where you're allowed to raise this fare. That is where you're allowed to raise this fare. But evidently you don't know nothing about the ADA when it comes to these people being late picking somebody up or canceling their ride. But I do, you do know about it because right here is the topic guideline that Dart is in. So once again, are you going to start abiding by it? Because I've been in touch with Washington. You might know the name Mary Beth Manica because she's waiting to hear about, from me about this right now. So get your act together.
Thank you. Yeann Ladney. Then Yeann Ladney. Maybe pronouncing that incorrectly. What do you think, Jean? Lynda Stanford. We'll come back to that one.
My name is Lynda Stanford and I've been riding Dart exclusively for 18 years. I realized back then that I was a bad driver because I was a scared driver and Dart was there to, for me to ride instead and everyone has been bitter off as a result. I'm here to speak about the three-hour pass. I have been retired for a year and a half now. The three-hour pass costs fully half of the day pass and we only get three hours. That's not fair. It takes a long time to get from your destination by bus and train and sometimes then feet to get to where you're going. Do your business and turn around and go back the same amount. For most of us who use those shorter passes are retired and on a fixed income like me or other poor, you know, under low-income persons. We need four hours minimum if you're going to charge us a buck 50 or $3 if you're not 65 yet. Three hours is not fair. No one in a big city that I've researched charges that much. So aside from frequency and cutting services, which you should not do, you need to think about the fare and who you're hurting. You're hurting your most vulnerable and those that can least afford it. Thank you.
I'm going to try this one more time. Is Yeann Ladney here? All right. Next speaker is Jeff Ulrich.
Jeff Ulrich. Jed Ulrich. Howdy. Um, I want to know, why are we having this conversation? I grew up in Houston. Dart was one of the reasons I wanted to move to Dallas and it blew my mind away. I love this institution. It is a crown jewel of the state of Texas. It's grown my community, my culture. I've been able to network and make friends and then go to shows and cultural events throughout the city. I go up to Las Colinas for conventions and the concerts, and then I also go up to Plano. Vienna Cafe is quite wonderful downtown Plano. I think we've noticed that this GMP is not going to appease Plano. They went behind you and continued down to Austin to present legislation to completely gut this agency. They foregone the votes and taxpayers of everyone in this agency and Plano's own constituents. Their taxpayers, all these taxpayers have poured money into this system for the Silverline and every rail and bus in this system, and they went behind all of us to Austin. I want Matt Shaheen to come down here and see our neighbors that rely on this system because he's mentioned in two years' time, he will present legislation once more. This GMP does nothing. It guts a system that has allowed us to live our lives, that we rely on and is wonderful. It has allowed me to go where I please and live my life as well as everyone here. I stand in solidarity with our neighbors and especially with the people of Plano who have not brought this to a general vote. If you want to leave Dart, give people of Plano a vote. Otherwise, do not go behind our backs. Thank you.
Next speaker is Hyacinth Sabo, followed by Cecilia Wagner.
Good evening, Dart Board and staff. My name is Hyacinth Sabo. I'm a resident of Irving and a member of the Dallas Area Transit Alliance. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Dart's board and staff for the truly exceptional accomplishment of being the only transit authority among, serving the 25 largest cities in the United States that provides more bus and train service today in 2025 than it did in 2019. This is a monumental accomplishment and I think you should feel proud of yourselves. However, I'm disappointed to see these cuts proposed today because they represent a massive step back from that accomplishment. I have two major concerns. The first is that I'm strongly opposed to cutting frequencies on evenings and weekends. This is when I typically ride Dart and a half-hour frequency would make it difficult or impossible for me to, you know, go about my business at these times. For example, going home after this meeting tonight in the rain. I'm also strongly opposed on principle to the general mobility program or at the very least funding the general mobility program by cutting service. What this does is it takes resources that currently go towards serving the working people of the entire region, not just Dallas, but Irving, Garland, and all the other member cities, and uses them to subsidize low property taxes on mansions up in Plano. This is a, this is a, like, this is a horrible use of Dart's very limited budget. So to sum up, no weekend and evening cuts, no general mobility program, not funded by service cuts, no caps, no cuts, no going back. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Wagner, followed by Natasha Randolph.
Good evening. My name is Natasha Randolph and I've been riding Dart since I was 12 years old. And how y'all going about it? That's how way till I go work. I wake up at 4:00 in the morning, leave my house at 4:30. And where y'all going? I ain't gonna have nothing because I live in Red Oaks. Red Oaks got one bus, one bus, and I gotta take that bus all the way downtown, catch the train, catch the nail bus. And when y'all do that, y'all hurting us. It's bad enough. Y'all don't have buses in the city like Grand Prairie, Arton, Garden, everywhere. So y'all need to think about just not y'all, y'all need to think about the world because it's our way bad enough. We got only buses, these people bothering us and everything. And I just want y'all, just pray, just pray on it. Just give to the Lord because I catch trans, I just like these people in the wheelchair. I, I is disabled. I can't even drive. My cousin gotta take me all the way to my Dart. So come on, y'all need to pray on it. I'm not, I'm not just doing for Dart. I do it for everybody. Everybody in here, y'all see, ride Dart every day. Come on, let's do it. Let's make the world better. Don't hurt the world. Make it better. Thank you. And this for me.
All right. Cecilia Wagner. Is there Cecilia Wagner here? Followed by Deborah Price?
Yep, that's right. Deborah Price. You got it right.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am on the Paratransit Advisory, I'm a member of the Paratransit Advisory Group. I'm not here just for myself. I know that if the Paratransit Service Area is reduced, I will lose my transportation and I am under the care of a psychiatrist. And the only way that I can get my medication is if I go see my doctor. I have a 78-year-old mother that has enough health issues as it is. If my transportation is gone, she will have to take me to my doctor's appointments, but that's going to be hard for her to do because she also has to take my stepfather to his. But all I'm asking is that you, you think about these things. There's people on dialysis. What are you going to do? Take theirs too?
Thank you. All right. Pascal Cheslow, followed by Noah Andrews.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pascal and I'm here against the general mobility program, especially involving the service cuts that are associated with this program. So I currently live in Carrollton. I work in Richardson and, and I would like to take Dart to and from my, my work commute. And I've done so at the expense of time. My current commute, for example, is 30 minutes by car, but I'm willing to give up a little bit to take the, take two buses for an hour and 15, hour and 20 minutes. But if these service cuts are implemented, I could find myself missing the bus I could have before at the transfer point and waiting for two hours. And frankly, I think that's unacceptable to ask someone like me to sit out there with a, you know, in the sun with no shade. You know, a lot of us have seen or experienced the pain of watching your bus go by, and now we're going to have to sit there and wait another 60 minutes for the next bus to come by. I don't, I don't believe that that's the way that we should be going. You know, forcing me to take my car instead of Dart where, at a time where pollution in North Texas has been forecasted to increase within the next 20 to 25 years, congestion, where we should be moving the opposite. I like to think that public transit, the success of public transit is not just the ridership of those who have no other choice to take it, but also the amount of people like me who have a choice and decide, I want to take Dart instead. And with these service cuts, you're, you're forcing those people out, the people who have a choice, and then you're taking away the choice from the people who don't have a choice at all. Everybody's here is talking about, you know, from South Dallas has given their story, but... Thank you.
Appreciate it. Noah Andrews, followed by Rohan Kattaburger.
Hi, my name's Harper Andrews. Thank you for your time and for listening to all of our comments. As the other, it's the other service cuts that will ultimately impact me, but I want to start by sharing my thoughts on the paratransit cuts. The potential reduction in service area was justified by referring to ADA guidelines. However, I think that we should view the ADA as a very limited starting point, not the gold standard. We should strive, strive to do the best that we can for our most vulnerable and not just the bare minimum that's required by an imperfect law. Plus, people undoubtedly made decisions about where to live based on current service and it would be cruel to remove that service or make it unaffordable now that they have made the choice to live in the service area. The other thing I want to highlight is how the proposed cuts could impact the Silverline. Uh, one sec, sorry. I think the Silverline never running more than once an hour would really hurt its chances of getting enough ridership to be viewed as successful. The perceived failure of Dart's biggest project in recent history would definitely provide a lot of ammunition to those who want to see Dart's funding be reduced. And as everyone here has shown, we can't afford even these cuts, much, much less ones that could come in the future from people who are saying Dart can't pull off projects. Beyond the direct service reductions, I believe that the cuts to bus routes would also harm Silverline ridership. As a Carrollton resident, I'm excited to use the Silverline to spend more time in Addison and Richardson. However, frequent bus services in those cities will be essential to making that viable, especially once the Silverline will run pretty infrequent, especially since the Silverline will run pretty infrequently, even if it doesn't get cut further. Bus cuts could prevent me from getting around once I'm there or cause me to end up waiting a whole hour for the next train. Thank you and please save our service.
Rohan Kattaburger, followed by Maxie Funk.
Good evening, esteemed board members. I'm Rohan Kattaburger, frequent user of Dart and a member of the Dallas Area Transit Alliance. I'm here to say that I oppose the severe service cuts and frequency reductions that are being proposed today. I typically ride Dart, light rail, and bus services on evenings and weekends, and those are the most significant parts of the day that are going to get cut with these service cuts, coming from Parker Road Station. Massively reducing Parker Road Transit Center's connectivity to other areas in Plano and Dallas will be devastating for me, especially routes 234, 254, and the red and orange line. What you're all proposing is, in plain terms, it will set the agency back and give no trust for the agency's strengths to anyone, not the cities, not the state, not the public that you as an agency are sworn to serve. The efforts that you have moved forward with the Silverline investment worth over $2 billion and the new terms agreement has the potential to change the narrative about Dart's position as a vendor of connectivity within the region. It can, it can make it so that it doesn't have to be viewed from the perspective of transit from the outside, but from the inside for the rider and the quality of life improvements, which go a long way from transit access and convenience. Dart can stand up to those with that perspective, not capitulate to it, as is the prevailing attitude from most legislators. And this cannot happen by undoing the progress Dart has made post-COVID nor going back on its ultimate promise, and I can, I'll say it again, to serve the citizens and serve the residents of the Dart Service Area. And so I ask again, no cuts, no caps, and full service for the Dart Service Area. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yolana Maxie Funk.
My name is Layana Maxie Funk. Thank you. I came to reclaim this time because I need people to- Wake up everybody, no more sleeping in bed, no more backs are stinking, top are thinking ahead. This is a marriage. This is no you without us. You cannot spell us without you. You need us, we need you. We got a hand over here and a hand over there. Do we weigh it out at the pump to go pay for gas? Do we pay it out at the grocery store? I don't know. But when you go to sleep tonight, I never wish nothing bad on nobody because I don't want you to feel sorry for little old me. Because if I look like Parkinson's disease, they said I have it, but he don't have me. And I have a stroke and I'm over here at Baylor. All the tests that they run, four of them, MRI, CAT scan, nothing in there. But I serve somebody that's bigger in a deity and I call him capital G O D because he's the one that look after me. I don't have a support system. I don't. I used to have one, but it's just me. If there's something that happens to me, I gotta keep thriving. I can't come up here crying to you. I don't want you to feel bad because my rent went up 53 bucks. My husband don't pay no maintenance, been in court a long time. This marriage we talking about here with y'all, I'm not even worried about that anymore. It's about to be dissolved. This one, think about it. Crime will be high, but I want to know how y'all going to get people to the OU game and the Texas game. That's what I came to claim right here. I'm not trying to be famous, notorious, none of that. But when you go to bed, you cannot put somebody in a shoestring. There are the shoes that, that don't know how to tie these shoes. But I just say this one thing while the mic is on, a rabbit, a foot is lucky, but it wasn't lucky for the rabbit and neither is it lucky for me. Think about capital G O D in YouTube.
Jonathan Hoover, followed by Sheri Mixon.
Good evening, Dart Board. I'm probably known as the guy that complains with the 229 very often. I come down here not to complain to the 229, but to complain about the potential service cuts that are ahead. For starter right now, on weekends, 229 is 60-minute frequencies on weekends. People already have a hard enough time trying to shop out the marketplace diversion in Irving. I already struggle using the 229 to get to work in the mornings. These service cuts will make that worse. As I hear, it's either 40 or 60-minute frequency midday for 229. 229 riders can't do that. It's already hard enough to connect- It's already hard enough to connect to all the other train lines and bus lines that are on the 229, like the Green Line, Orange Line, TRE, and Addison Transit Center. We need more frequency, we don't need less. No caps, no cuts, full service. I yield my time.
Sheri Mixon, followed by Mildred Edwards.
I'm Sheri Mixon, and I am the Executive Director of TR Hoover Community Development Corporation. We're in South Dallas off of Bear Street, sunny south. As an organization committed to uplifting and empowering our community, we recognize that access to reliable transportation is not just a convenience, it is a critical component of equity, inclusion, and opportunity. Unlike other areas, transportation in South Dallas is not a supplementary. It is a detrimental resource to the success and mobility of the individuals and families we serve. Whether it's youth attending enrichment programs, parents accessing employment opportunities, or seniors reaching essential services, GoLink has become a part of our lifeline. To remove or reduce this service is to inadvertently exclude the very people we are called to We must challenge ourselves. Take a good look, upper management of DART. Take a good look, those that are called here to serve in a volunteer capacity. We must collectively remain inclusive and thoughtful in our planning. Reliable transit isn't simply about moving from point A to point B. It's about ensuring that everyone, regardless of zip code, can participate in the progress and promise of this city. We kindly urge you, Dart leadership, no budget cuts, no service cuts, and come together with this community, and let's collectively decide what our next step would be. Don't make South Dallas your scapegoat.
Mildred Edwards, followed by Jaclyn Mixon.
I'm from the South Dallas community all of my life. I raised my children with the college right here in South Dallas. But today, I want you to real see of the dealers of this community. We walked, we knocked on doors, we asked our neighbors for our GoLink. And I don't think it's fair for you guys to come over here and to take our GoLink from South Dallas. I just want you to see the real people that made GoLink actually happen. This is not hearsay. You can see for yourself. These are our neighbors into our community. We love our community. I won't go anywhere else but South Dallas, because that is my home, my mother and them. Everyone went to high school, Lincoln, GoTigers. And I want you to know, we are the real people that made GoLink happen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mildred Edwards, and I am from South Dallas, too, and I am here to speak on behalf of South Dallas. You know, my youngest, two kids, I moved them out of South Dallas so they could get a better education. I stayed away for 25 years. When my mom passed in '07, I moved back to South Dallas, and it's the same old same as it was before I left. They don't want to see us with the new H S Thompson Elementary School. They want to take it away and make it out of one of those charter schools. It's like we don't deserve nothing new like that, okay, in South Dallas, okay? But we do. And there is a lot of elderly people that need the services that you all are finna take away from South Dallas and move further north. It's an elderly lady come there at the TR Hoover Center on Tuesdays. She had to come like almost three blocks to get food at the giveaway, and she's on a walker, this elderly lady. I know because I have stopped and picked her up and took her on to that center. This lady evidently she doesn't have the money to get DART and stuff. And there's a lot of people over there that need DART transportation. Do not take that away from South Dallas. They've always taken stuff away from us. It's still the same old same old as it was when I left and stayed gone for 25 years. When I came back, it was the same way. But I'm speaking on behalf of South Dallas because I was born and raised in South Dallas. I moved back to South Dallas, but my kids was in high school when I moved back, where they could take care of themselves, and I hope you all do the same.
Thank you. Barbara Johnson, followed by Michael Hancock.
I'm Barbara Johnson. I am a South Dallas resident, and I have used GoLink on several occasions, as well as my grandson, the young man working a job and a half, and it's been very good for us. So I oppose them taking GoLink from us. So that's pretty much all I want to say. Please don't take it. It's been very beneficial to us, a lot of the seniors. I can't, I used to drive a lot, and I can't drive that much, and I depend on it. Thank you all.
Michael Hancock, followed by Rose Juanzo.
To the Dart Board, God bless you. I'm reminded when I speak of this issue, of an issue that came up a few months ago, that I just couldn't imagine how the people that was in leadership felt that what they were doing was going to be a beneficial thing for the poor people. They came up with something they called terror attacks. Who is it gonna hurt? Then, I'm an Uber driver out here in Plano. Man, when I go through Plano, I'm excited to see the way the city looks, but I'm from South Dallas. So my question is, why would Plano want something out of South Dallas? And the only thing I could think of, terror attacks.
Oh, Rose Juanzo. Do we have a Rose out there? Okay, Rose Juanzo, come on through. And then followed by, and this is a tough one, it's number 53G. Okay, come on. Yeah, do that, go ahead. And then we'll get Rose after you.
My name is Amy Washington.
You know, we guessed, but we were wrong. Thank you. Go ahead, Amy.
Well, I am a resident of South Dallas, and I'm here to speak on behalf of South Dallas and a disadvantaged and senior citizens and residents of South Dallas. I moved to South Dallas in 2008, and I was fortunate to get a job in a eye clinic, but the clinic was in like North Dallas, so I needed the DART transit to get to my place of business. And it helped me a lot, but now I'm fortunate to have a car, but I see a lot of residents in South Dallas that use the DART transit to get back and forth to work. And even the elderly, I have watched them as I commute back and forth to where I have to go, watching them on corners, waiting on the DART transit in the rain and whatever it takes, but they're able to get back and forth to where they need to go. Grocery stores, we have grocery stores, but they're not grocery stores that's feasible enough to help them with their health issues. So if they want to eat properly, they have to catch the DART transit, to go way to Kroger's, way to Walmart, things like that, so that they can get the proper nourishment that they need for that. So I'm asking on behalf of South Dallas and the resident there to please do not take that benefit away from those people over there. Please, thank.
All right. Rose Juanzo, followed by Evelyn Cristobal.
Hello, my name is Rose Juanzo, and I oppose the whole bill that you have here. I think that is just wrong for poor people, as myself, because we cannot afford that high price. I don't know what's be hired, the dark bus, or a cab, or Uber, because right now you're racing, it's like one-on-one. And I usually take DART because the fact that it's cheaper and it fits in my budget. Now that you're raising the prices, I cannot afford it, and I don't know what I'm gonna do, because I usually use this transportation for what my medical do not pay for. My medical, thank God, does pay for my transportation to the doctor, but that's all it pays for. It doesn't pay for me going to the grocery store, pick up my medication at the CVS, anything like that. So I'll make it short and simple. I oppose it. Thank you.
Evelyn Cristobal, followed by Ken Duble.
I believe Evelyn's not here tonight. Yeah, my name is Ken Duplay, and I live in the Cedars 1529 Hickory Street. And I'm here to speak out against the GMP. It seems that the, I haven't heard anyone speak in favor of it this evening. It seems that the whole notion that people should get less service and pay more for it is not a winning proposition. I want to make the point, though, that I want to appeal to our neighbors in the north, the northern suburbs. This whole network, this beautiful system we built, would not have been possible without your partnership and support. And these service cuts aren't just going to hurt the people in Dallas, they're going to hurt you, especially with this cotton belt. And I want you to think about this. This was a big hullabaloo a few years ago, and our colleagues and partners in the north were saying, you know, we've been a Dart all of these years, and we want this, you promised this cotton belt, and so we sped it up just so that you could get this service to the airport, which is what it is. And I want you to imagine that you want to catch a flight, and you get caught in traffic, and you arrive at the station just as the train is pulling out. Someone said earlier that frequency is freedom, but I want you to know that frequency is utility, because that person is now going to be sitting there for an hour waiting for that train in order to get to the airport, and they're going to be, if they're flying to Oklahoma City or San Antonio, they're going to be spending more time sitting there waiting for the train than they would actually be in the flight. Of course, they're not going to do that. Freedom is, frequency is utility.
Thank you very much. Now, is Evelyn Cristobal here? Evelyn Cristobal? No? Okay. Sanjay Ahn?
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. This is my third time to speak at a Dart meeting, and it's in behalf of my special friends that were sitting here earlier that spoke, and I'd like to say, hi, Anthony, how are you? Nice to see you here. Anyway, I became friends with Pam and Brenda through Prestonwood Baptist Church a few years ago. And through that, I got to know two very special ladies, that if you do what you are going to do, I have no idea whose brain idea it was to do this program, to hurt this community. Who thought of this? Who came up with this brain idea to put these people in such turmoil and bring such hurt and anger to their hearts? Do you not care? Do you not have a heart? You get in your fancy cars, and you go riding wherever you want to go, don't you? You shop wherever you want to shop, don't you? Well, Brenda and Pam can't do that. Not only that, since Dart started a new program in January, Brenda and Pam are getting left. They live in the same apartment complex that they have lived in for 35 years in Garland. They go to the same church every Sunday, same address, right? Used to be they could get on the same bus. Guess what? Brenda may get a bus early, then Pam comes, going home. Same address, going home. Brenda gets on a bus, Pam gets on a bus. Sometimes, one day, it was three hours that a minister helped us at Prestonwood Baptist Church get them on the right buses. That's a disgrace, and that's a shame. Please stop this charade and circus that you have going now. Please do it now, for the special people that need you. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Lewis. Melissa Lewis.
I've been waiting for this.
Followed by Kelsey Lacour. Go ahead.
You ready?
I'm ready. Go ahead.
All right. Look, I'm not gonna lie, DART has improved my life. Before, I couldn't go anywhere. But I decided to change that, and I applied for paratransit. And my life has been enriched greatly since I've gotten paratransit, all right? But this increase of double in a year, that's gonna, that's gonna change my life going back in the other direction. I'm not going to be able to have the life that I'm having now, and it's not going to be just a cut of, oh, just a couple of trips, or this, that, excuse me, this, that, and the other. Look, I have a special dog, okay? And his food is very costly. Now, if this happens, then I'm gonna have to, hey, he gonna have to eat whatever the hell I buy, you know? And that's not good for him. So not only is it gonna affect me, my household, and there's other people that's going to be affected by this, because I am on a fixed income. Some of these people are lucky enough to get disability. I am not one of those. And if I have to pay the price increase that y'all are proposing, I'm just gonna have I'm just gonna have to, I'm always thinking about my, my enrichment and improvement. I'm just gonna have to switch to another program, like maybe your GoLink service. And I still live in the food desert. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Kelsey Lacour, followed by Ochia Allison.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Lacane. Um, so first off, I want to say thank you guys so much for like staying this late. I know it's late, it's late for me too. I'm like, oh my God, I'm so tired. But thank you guys so much for staying and listening to all of us. If you were outside, you'd see that there's a ton of people wanting to talk to you guys about how important this is. And I think that's a blessing for you guys, to let you know that there's a large community that wants Dart to be here. They want to use Dart, and it's important for you guys to listen to us and build that trust, so that people can still trust you guys and not go to different alternatives. But I just want to say, I live in Addison, and I use the 235 to get to Addison Transit Center, and I use another bus to get to another location, so I can go to my job every single day. And if the budget, or if it's reduced service, I will not be able to do that. I will have to drive, which I can do, but there are a lot of people that don't have the ability to. And I would also be able to use Lyft or Uber, which I would prefer to give my money to Dart, which is a Dallas company, not Lyft or Uber, where, where am I getting anything back from that? Dart really helps our communities, and we see the benefit from that all around. And I think it's important that you guys see how we really care for Dart. So that's all I've gotta say. Thank you.
Ochia Alicio, followed by Alpha Thomas.
Yes, my name is Alicio, is this okay?
Yes.
Um, I was grateful when they put back the, the route on, um, from like Thurston, they, it was the number 207, but before it was a 209, and before they took it off, there, there was nobody riding it on it. But that made me like really upset, and I couldn't get around anywhere. But once they put it back, and that was sometime this year, and then there was a price, a price increase. And come to the end of this year, there's gonna be another price increase, and that's gonna cut into my budget, because I'm in a fixed income, and I'm disabled, I have a Dart Paratransit ride. But I don't use that, because you know, it's a time manner. But I just really hope you guys don't increase it, and don't eliminate my route, because it feels like I'm only the one that rides that route in my neighborhood. But that 207 extended off to the rigor row, to the warehouses, so it does benefit more people, other than just me, because it connected like three routes onto one. So I hope the best for this Dart opportunity to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Alpha Thomas, followed by Marcia Gale Hampton.
Good evening. My name is Alpha Thomas, and I am a resident of the South Dallas Fair Park community. I am a retired non-driver, and have used Dart for seven years, and GoLink for three years as my primary mode of transportation. I am here in support of the GoLink program as a voice for the elderly, those with health conditions, non-drivers, those with physical challenges, and the visually impaired. The GoLink program meets the transportation needs of a unique population in our community, and prevents them from falling through the cracks. It provides easy access to medical and dental appointments, the library, the thrift store, schools, the grocery store, the Social Security Administration, train stations, churches and religious institutions, food pantries, Walgreens, Family Dollar, the post office, and restaurants. The GoLink program is supported for the following advantages. It provides front door pickup and expedite travel. It eliminates wait time in comparison to buses. There is no long distance walking to bus stops. It eliminates multiple transfers. There are no delays in making connections. And there is no standing or waiting in the rain, heat, or cold. The GoLink program fills a transportation gap in our community. We want to keep it, and would like to see it expand. Without it, people will fall through the cracks. Thank you, and I shake.
All right, next speaker is Marcia Gale Hampton, followed by Angelo Del Angel. And Marcia is 64. Number 64. And we have, yeah, number 66, Angelo, Angelo Del Angel. Yep. Is that person gone?
Good evening. I am speaking up on behalf of myself as a transit rider, and also as a member of Dallas Area Transit Alliance in opposition to these cuts. Now, tonight, I'd like to say the quiet part out loud. See, after the last legislative, uh, state legislative session ended, the HB 3187 fight, I poured a little cold water on our moment with data by telling the other members this. As long as our suburban city halls are broke and shortsighted, we will keep having this fight. Lo and behold, a few weeks later, Matt Shaheen announced his intentions to introduce a similar bill in the next session. And of course, there's the appeasement measure currently under consideration. Now, I can't blame our suburbs for being broke. Eighty years of funding today's obligations with tomorrow's insolvent growth has brought them to the mess they're in. It's not your fault, you walked in, you're holding the bag. Now, any fiscal conservative could tell you that's a recipe for problems, and sure enough, here we are. And I can't entirely blame them for being shortsighted either. Generations of constituents have been born, lived, and died in these burbs. And now, their car-dependent sprawl is the best arrangement that far too many can think of for our human habitat. And that poor fiscal plan, it's just business as usual now. But we would love nothing more than to show our suburban officials towards a better way. I, for one, would like to see Plano and Irving's growth steered in such a way that they become models for how to build better, more livable cities, and go from insolvency to fiscal health. Right now, these suburban officials see transit, see everybody's lifeblood, as low-hanging fruit to pluck when they need to free up some cash. But to a functional city and region, it's a vital part of our lives. It could be part of these suburb solutions if they have the vision to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Martin, followed by Curtis Green.
My name is Matthew Martin, and I live in Richardson, which is one of the cities that would be eligible for the GMP funds. I take Dart zero to five times a month, largely, because the destinations I have are within walking or biking distance. And I understand that for Richardson, those GMP funds may go to active transportation. So let me be very clear. I am against the GMP, I am against reductions to services, and I am against reductions in frequency. I took Dart tonight, not because I had to, but because it's a less stressful experience, and because I, it's more timely than having to fight down 75. I mapped it before I came, and it was faster to take Dart, including getting to the station. If these reductions came into effect, I wouldn't be able to have that opportunity. I wouldn't have that freedom, because it wouldn't have worked with my job, and the timing wouldn't have worked out. And I'd have to add another car onto the road, increasing traffic for everyone. Transit is much more efficient than having cars in this place. And so is more responsible to fund Dart, and is fiscally irresponsible to fund the GMP, requiring us to have larger roads and reconstructing them. And the GMP isn't going to cover that. I know that Richardson and many of our neighbors have invested in transit-oriented development. Having these reductions would undercut that investment, decreasing that property value, and increasing taxes for all of us, not just riders. So I am against the GMP, I am against reductions in service, I am against reductions in frequency, because it is, would increase traffic. It would reduce freedom in our transportation choices. It would be fiscally irresponsible, and it would increase taxes on all of us. Thank you.
Curtis Green, followed by Tracy Wallace.
I am Tracy Wallace, I live in 75214. The South Dallas Fair Park Transportation Initiative, with the community fought hard to secure a South Dallas GoLink. South Dallas suffers economically and has the lowest rate of vehicle ownership in Dallas County. In 2018, we were told we couldn't have GoLink in South Dallas because so many buses ran to that area. An argument that's been trotted out again today. This has never accounted for the aging population, who have no cars, to get to the stores, appointments, and home, nor single mothers with children in tow hauling groceries home. Originally, South Dallas GoLink was only given the hours of 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We fought hard to get equal hours to what other GoLinks had. 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM prevented parents, whose children were at Vogel Alcove, from getting to work on time. It prevented students from getting to school on time. It prevented students from staying late for after-school activities, a marker of success. We fought to get the hours, and now Dart wants to kill South Dallas GoLink. Those to our north want to cut services, and Dart wants to do this on the backs of the least of these. Dart should cut services for those most likely to weather an increase in fares, not those most least likely. Those most likely are in the northern sector. Plano wants to reduce costs, then cut Plano services. Lakewood, of which I am a resident, did not want buses running up and down their streets, cut their GoLink. There are at least two cars in every driveway. South Dallas desperately needs and relies on their GoLink service. Stop making ends meet by harming those with the greatest needs.
Henry Franklin, followed by Kevin Wright.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you for just a few seconds. Um, I want to take the time out just to highlight how critical Route 378 is for the southern area of Dallas. This is just not only a bus line that is on the map, this is a lifeline. This bus serves the neighborhoods that I live in. I live in Cedar Hills, so you have people who live in Menlothian, Cedar Hill, Duncanville, Andy Soto, who rise to 378 to come downtown to work. I am an employee of Dart, and I ride that bus every day, five days a week. Not only does 378 serves that southern area, 378 also serves students who ride that bus to come to the downtown campuses here, downtown Dallas. Only, I see three of my other friends of mine who ride the 378, and they are here as well, and we all ride the 378. There's the 306 that you see more than you'd see other 378, but 378 is gonna be eliminated. So I just wanted to take the time out and just say, please reconsider cutting 378, because there's other people who ride the bus and depends on it to get to work. Thank you for your time, good night.
Kevin Wright, followed by Timothy Crum. Kevin Wright? Followed by Timothy Crum, all right?
Hello, my name is Kevin Wright, and I've been a Dart Paratransit user for 20 years. Please, uh, please don't, um, cut this, the service, keep the service the same, and it would be hard, it's already gone up to $3.50 in March, and another increase up to $6 would be nearly double what I'm paying now, which, which is I use Dart a couple of times a week, two times a week, two, one or two times a week. And I use it to go to my Independent Living Center and my volunteer job. And also, it's not a very good idea to reduce the service area to three quarters, three quarters of a mile, because that's, we cut off 17% of the service area. And luckily, I'm not affected, but I do know someone who would be affected, that would have to pay $10. And, and also, please don't have the TRE only run once an hour, especially during rush hours. Sometimes me and my family use the TRE to go to the Mavericks, or the Stars game, or, or any other things that we need to do downtown. Thank you.
Timothy Crum, followed by Tammy Greenberg Debb.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Timothy, last name Crum, C-R-U-M. And I just wanted to say, you know, I've been here in Dallas for seven years, eight years, eight years? And I've been using Paratransit, and it's been great for me. And without it, I will not be able to get around. There's no way I can get around without Paratransit. But as my dad used to say, just keep on living and don't die. You will see it. If you think, if you think you're not needing, you're not in need of anything right now, you'll need it one day. So you gotta be, you better be careful what you do, you know, and how you treat people, because it'll come back on you, one way or the other, it'll come back. You just keep living and don't die. You'll see it. My dad used to say that all the time. And, uh, you know, and I never thought I would be, become disabled. I never thought I would, I would need anybody, or need, you know, need anything, because I was working in corporate, you know, doing my thing, and, you know? Life happens. But, you know, you sit there and look at us, and you stopped listening a long time ago, but please listen, because one day, you will see it. You cut off services for people because they need them. They need the services. We're not asking you, like, you know, we're seeking charity or something, but, you know, it's like, you never know what you're gonna need in life. You have no idea what you're gonna need in life, you really don't. You really don't know. So, you know, before you think about cutting things, think about improving things, instead of cutting. Because when you cut, you cut people as well. And when you cut those people, you never know who they're attached to, or what they're attached to. So think about that, when you lay your head on your pillow tonight.
Thank you. Tammy Greenberg Debb, followed by Sharina Yeh.
Thank you, I know it's a long night, trust me. It feels like Austin again, all over again. Um, by the way, this is my normal routine. My husband left me behind because he was more concerned about my dog. So this is a normal routine for me to be out, out in Dart, otherwise Transfer Center at 9:15 PM. I'm mostly there 9:15 on the weekends, because of course, I go to Plano in the morning for going to Costco, go to the downtown farmer's market, because you count, you cancel two buses in the Cedars. Bus 35 and Bus 26. I can't go to my own farmer's market. You are eliminating my GoLink. No one has managed the Cedars, only one person, my husband. No one has managed the Cedars, only one person, my husband. There's another person who lives in Cedar. We're part of South Dallas. And by the way, your service planning or your marketing team did not put no signs, no signs for this meeting in the Cedars. I had to be authorized to be there. So I take the 237. This is going to kill me at night, every hour and an hour when I go to services. I'm going to be out 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock. I have to liable to the West Transfer Center, the Bus 13, or the, if you're going to eliminate GoLink, I'm stuck. And I'm going to get harassed or stay at Acker Station and walk eight minutes by myself in the dark that I might have to do tonight. Please save GoLink. Save, save Dallas. You are hurt at once, you hurt it over and again. We're tired of this. Thank you.
Shatrina Haskell, followed by Cosette Harris. Shatrina is 74.
Yes, I'm Shatrina Haskell.
Okay, cool.
So hello, thank you all for this opportunity. I am Shatrina Haskell and I am standing for my parents. They are 85 and 84. On January 21st, my father had, we found out that he had kidney cancer, which we didn't know that it was on his pancreas where he had a diabetic coma where he went blind. In the process of him going blind, it made me have to change up everything that I did and I'm a mother as well. So I had to come down here and get him set up for the paratransit. Didn't know that it would take 23 days because he was hospitalized, so he had to go to his follow-up appointment and things of that sort. Now, my concern is, we finally got this in place and it has been doing a tremendous extra, it's been helpful for me because I'm still a mother. Although I'm caught up in the sandwich, so-called generation, it's not fair to the people who have outlived their family members and don't have any help or don't have the access of a good running car that's not too low to the ground or not too high or whatever for them to be able to be comfortable. So I just ask that you will consider the fact that one day you can be driving and instantly you can have a stroke and something can happen that will cause you not to be able to see, not to be able to walk, talk, or anything. And the paratransit is helpful because they take time with the people. I rode with my father one time to get down here and the way that they took the initiative to meet them outside, put them in, put them in the seatbelt and it was only $3. Before he, we had this appointment, before he got approved, Uber was $30 to get to St. Paul. They're 85 and 84. They cannot work. So please, please be mindful and think of what everybody is saying. Do not go higher because they need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Cosette Harris, followed by Sofia Gonzalez.
My name is Cosette Harris and I'm, I'm Rallett area and I was here to, on behalf of GoLink and not for you all not to end the zone-to-zone from Rallett to Garland because I use Rallett to Garland also from home to my job, I use South Dallas. South Dallas GoLink to bring me to work because they don't have no bus going to Katy Street. And before then, I used to walk. Can't walk anymore. So I have two more years before I retire and I'm asking, please do not delete the zone-to-zone, Rallett to Garland and the South Dallas area. Thank you.
Thank you. Sofia Gonzalez, I'm sorry, Sofia Gonzalez, number 89. All right. The next person is Caroline Howell, 102.
My name is Carolyn Howell. Can I reclaim my, the two minutes? My name is Carolyn Howell. I live in Irving and this is my first time to actually be fully independent where I can actually go and participate in my local community with individuals who have disabilities and, like myself, and not have to rely on my family members or my friends or my church family to be able to get me to places. I can do it by myself with paratransit. Please do not increase the prices because we already had a price increase in March. That was only three months ago. Why are y'all deciding to actually more than double that of what the original price was? I don't understand that logic. I don't understand why you penalize the people who have disabilities and who need paratransit out of your own paychecks. I don't, I don't understand that. Please, please explain that because I, I shouldn't have to be penalized for your budget cuts. That should come from your individual budgets.
Thank you.
Is, is my time over?
She only, she only got one minute.
Yeah, I only got one minute.
She only got one minute.
Okay.
Am I okay to go?
Yes, is that right? I, I can't hear you. She got the two full minutes. But we understand.
I asked for two minutes. I only got one.
It was straight at the yellow. It was at 50 when she started.
It was at, yes, it wasn't even at two. I, I, I know how to read a clock.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Take your minute.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I, I, I don't, I don't mean to waste your time. I know this is a long night. I, I know y'all've got a lot, a lot on your plate, but, but if, if y'all went up to these price increases that you're proposing, I would have to give a third of my total income that I get from SSI every single month in order to participate, just participate in my local community, not contribute because I can't financially contribute, but I can give people my time. I can give people my energy. I can give people the, the love and the compassion that I have for people who have disabilities and other people who don't. And that is a valuable, valuable thing to me and that is the only thing I have because as a 31, 33-year-old, this is the first time I've ever had my own independence and it's because of DART, paratransit. So thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Akeisha McCurran-McKee, followed by Sofia Gonzalez. What'd you ask? Akeisha Becker, 87.
How y'all doing? I'm Akeisha Becker. I am a DART paratransit rider. I've been riding since 2007, 2008, something like that. And let's, it's been $3. This price increase is going to hurt a lot of us. I mean, I understand y'all going up to the $3.50, but a lot of times, people don't have 50 cents to just, you know, give. And then y'all going up to $6, that's $12 going and coming. What if an elderly person has to go to the grocery store and they have to bring someone with them? That is $24. That is two-thirds, maybe even half of their groceries. I ask y'all, I urge y'all, don't do this. We're not asking for handouts. We just want y'all to reconsider not going up in the price and not taking GoLink out of South Dallas. I'm not from South Dallas, but I have a friend that's from South Dallas and I really don't want, you know, I, I really don't want this to happen to anybody. I don't want y'all to take away things that we need because what will happen in the event that, since y'all charging $6, nobody's patroning. Nobody can go anywhere. What's going to happen then? Then y'all may fall. All I'm asking is for y'all to just not give up on us, not do this to us because we don't deserve what's going on with whatever you guys, whatever y'all got going on with y'all. We don't deserve this at all. South Dallas does not deserve to get GoLink taken away from them and we don't deserve these price increases with paratransit because let's be real, we all cannot afford to be able to pay $6.24, however much it's going to cost going and coming back. I ride paratransit six days a week. I won't be able to do that anymore. Just don't, just reconsider. That's all I'm saying. Reconsider.
All right, thank you. For Sofia Gonzalez, number 89, here or not? You guys know? Okay. Dave Brady is the next person, followed by Shirley Linwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a bus rider, I've been going to work events since before DART was born. Thrice stricken by careless drivers, DART has become survival since retirement. And I really know the benefits of public transportation. Now, all the years of meetings that I've attended, this is the largest turnout in DART's And I decided that I really needed to stress to you about the many comments that have come forth about the raises in the paratransit service and the difficulties that that provides or would provide for all of those who so depend on DART. Really thank you for your patience, for hearing the riders' concerns tonight because you've been here a long time and I understand that. But I have to really please, plead with you to hear their pleas and think about what you do at the budget workshop coming up and try to figure out a way to not force rate increases on the paratransit riders. I use public service, the regular service, as much as I possibly can. So I don't have to deal with some of the financial problems that they have. But please rethink it. Find a different budget line for that fare increase. Thank you.
Shirley Linwood, followed by Samuel Foster.
My name is Ms. Shirley Linwood. I am a 13-year United States Marine Corps veteran, disabled. I don't feel bad for none of y'all. This is ridiculous. You are biting the hand that feeds you. These people pay you. This is where your bonuses come from. I don't need DART. I don't pay rent. I don't pay a mortgage. I don't have to leave home, but they do. They work late at night and need DART to get home. When people are dying on the streets, you laying at home in your beds. You have no feeling for these people, no feelings. When you were laying comfortably in your big houses, I was laying in some water somewhere in the jungle or I was in 120-degree shade, sun in the shade. Think about this. You all walking right now, y'all driving right now. Some of y'all got two cars, you might have three. Think about somebody else first. When y'all wanted to go to Plano the first time, they didn't want you. Now you trying to give them some money? Who does that? But you're going to take away from these people. They don't, Plano got more money than all these people. Stop that. Stop that. They don't need y'all. They got money. Don't give them money on the backs of these people. Stop doing that. Some of these people could be your parents. Some of them could be your children that's disabled and can't get around. Everybody don't have a van that's outfitted for a wheelchair. Stop that. They up late at night. Y'all need to be here tonight. You earning your money tonight. Stop doing that. Please, think about the people you are taking from. They already don't have much. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Foster, followed by Elan Hutton.
The other person wasn't here. I'm here, I'm just going to quickly echo and ditto everything said tonight. I work here down on Main Street with a local organization that provides services to 99% of the people who have spoken tonight, 99% of the people who are going to speak tonight. And I would like to just add that without DART, some of these individuals will not have access to justice. They will not have access to vote, to access the courtroom. They will not have access to fight for their rights in a time when homing, home instability is prevalent. Our services are most greatly needed and given the fact that we're downtown, parking is not feasible for most of them who are barely able to make ends meet, to come downtown to get help, to be, for advocates to help them, it's not feasible. And it's important that you all consider that in making steps going forward. And again, I would just like to echo every sentiment here that shall come and has come before. Thank you.
Samuel Foster, I tried that once, but he may not be here, followed by Alex Flores.
My name is Alex Flores. I am a 24-year-old mid-support needs autistic who lives in Plano, Texas, and I have been riding DART for just about eight years now. I, like everyone here, is here against the current proposals, but primarily I'll talk about what affects me since you've heard from people who have the things that affect them. My main route is Route 234, which spans from Parker Road Station to the Northwest Plano Park and Ride. It is one of the largest routes that stays almost entirely in Plano and with how often I use it, how many times I see other people use it, it's frankly silly to cut it, especially given the proposed replacements for it and its sister route, Route 254. Given that Plano is home to a wide variety of disabled people, we have fantastic things like the Brain Center, we have My Possibilities. We also have a Level 4 Trauma Hospital that specializes in neurological things. And frankly, I find it insulting that you do not consider that the primarily people affected by this are going to be your disabled individuals like myself and those who are in far worse situations than myself. And yet, we have complimentary shuttle routes to replace the corporates that are going to be affected by the legacy route cut. Frankly, I think it is ridiculous that you think that you can replace multiple bus routes with a citywide GoLink. And while GoLink is a fantastic service, it is not enough to do in entire city the scale of Plano. I recognize that my city is directly at fault for the mess that we have found ourselves in, but to me, this feels like giving a baby, exactly like a toddler, what they want when they throw a tantrum because they're just going to throw another tantrum because they're going to expect the same treatment back is how this feels. Frankly, Plano needs to get its own problem solved and it does not need to be dragging the rest of DFW down with it. No cuts, no change to service, that's all I've got to say on that. Thank you for your time.
Jacob Merritt, followed by Natasha Owens.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Mark. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our comments. I work in the medical district. I am speaking from a position of privilege in which I'm able, I'm close enough to the hospital to be able to bike to work. However, many of my coworkers and many, many of our patients rely very deeply on DART and TRE to meet their daily needs. These proposed cuts will be harming Dallas County's most vulnerable residents and I just ask you, please, to reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Owens, followed by Gavin O'Leary. I think it, Natasha Owens. I think it, Natasha Owens. Letitia Owens. Okay, then Gavin O'Leary. Come on, Gavin.
Hello. My name is Gavin O'Leary. I'm a proud Oak Cliff resident and a proud member of the Texas Chapter of the American Communist Party, and we are against these unjust cuts. I want to begin by attacking the artificial crisis being imposed by politicians on the people of North Texas. Plano, Addison, Richardson, and Carrollton all stand to benefit immensely from the $2 billion silver line being constructed by DART. It is absurd for these cities to say that they are not getting their fair share from DART when they conveniently forget one of the largest infrastructure projects in North Texas history. Now, let's move on to the real issue. Make no mistake, this is naked class warfare on the working people of North Texas. As we've already heard at this and every other hearing, DART is fundamental to the daily survival of tens of thousands of North Texans. These proposed cuts, almost all of them impacting the working-class neighborhoods of South Dallas, will make daily life intolerable and social mobility impossible. Workers will face longer commutes while the disabled will be forced to forego medical care because they can't afford the cab fare. Because of these cuts, workers will lose their jobs. Because of these cuts, people will die. To end, I wish to add my voice to the chorus of thousands organizing against these cuts. North Texans have a right to safe and affordable transportation. Thank you. And to the working people who can hear my voice, let's get organized.
Akendo Funso. Akin, Akintando Funso. Something like that. Followed by Ricky Redd.
Good evening. My name is Akiyantunde Funzo. I'm a co-founder with Fahim Minka of the Dallas Chapter of the Black Panther Party. I don't get out much anymore. I'm old, I've got diabetes, I've got, I have to have shots in my knees every six months, and I'm legally blind. But I thought this was important enough for me to come out tonight, because I did a lot of work in South Dallas and Oak Cliff, trying to organize communities for liberation. And liberation isn't always having guns and different things like that. This is part of liberation process, the opportunity, the opportunity to move freely around the city that you live in without being penalized for it. I hear people talking about cities, this, that, and that. For the whole night, my mind has been on 40%, because I have a friend who has dialysis, and they're paying $3.50 to catch the rider, the handy rider. And so if it's $6, that's a 40% increase. 40% increase is actually a 40% decrease in income for someone who has a fixed income. And not only that, I can't even imagine the increase in food insecurity, because that's 40% of money that you could be using for food. And for us elderly people, I took a course in gerontology on my way to my Master of Social Work, and it told me that the two most important things for older people is independence and security. And one of the insecurities that we have is food insecurity. And it's not about, oh, I'm got 60% food insecurity, it's about, it's a word, it's called exponential fear, because we don't know what we're gonna have eat tomorrow, and if we have to pay all these high costs to ride where we're going, I don't know what's gonna happen. This is a death penalty, I heard someone say earlier. This is a death penalty, especially for those people with...
What do you call it? Have to go to dialysis? Does it have to reduce the time to go to dialysis? What's gonna happen? You're gonna die.
Thank you. Ricky Redd, number 84, and then Jennifer Rotkamp.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Rotkamp, and I'm a special education transition teacher at WH Adamson High School in Dallas ISD and Oak Cliff resident. I serve students ages 18 to 22 with significant cognitive disabilities, young adults who are not just learning academics but how to live, work, and belong in their communities. For us, DART paratransit isn't a convenience, it's a lifeline. We rely on it almost every day to access the food pantry, arrive at job sites, participate in volunteer work, and build independence they've worked their entire lives towards. Without it, my students are stranded, isolated, and left behind. Let me tell you about George, a student with autism in our transition class. Because of paratransit, he was able to complete his very first paid work experience without a family member, a milestone built his confidence and sense of purpose. Or Hasiel, who has always dreamed of working with animals. Thanks to paratransit, he now rides across town to a dog training facility where he's not just working, he's thriving. That ride brings dignity and changed his life, but that ride is becoming less accessible. In March, fares quietly increased from $3 to $3.50, a seemingly small change that caused mass confusion. Some DART drivers even begun carrying extra change in their own pockets to help cover costs for confused and distressed riders. Now, just months later, DART is proposing another increase, $6 per ride, that's a 100% increase in less than a year. While the ADA permits paratransit fares to be up to twice the base fares, let's be clear, that's a ceiling, not a requirement. The ADA exists because of people like Jennifer Kealan, who at age eight, years old, crawled up the steps of the US Capitol during the Capitol crawl, leaving her wheelchair behind and demanding access and dignity. She said, "I'll take all night if I have to." But she shouldn't have had to, and my students shouldn't have to fight like this either. Now imagine asking those individuals to pay $12 round trip just to get to a job, a doctor, or to the grocery store, or worse, stay at home because they can't afford it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, I'll do this one more time, number 84, Ricky Redd. If that person's not here, we'll go on to Brianna Brody, number 96.
Followed by Paulette Brody. Hello. My name is Brianna Brody. I'm the president of Lighthouse Prep, and among the other things I do, I mentor 16- to 24-year-olds. I'm not gonna talk about, like, the cuts that you're gonna make that are gonna affect the vulnerable population that other people have already talked about, but I do think that you guys can increase your revenue by focusing on the middle-class worker. I think that you may underestimate the amount of people who will pay for a DART pass. My mother, she was hit by a drunk driver a couple months ago, and she takes the GoLink to Rolette, where she works, she's a teacher. She still takes, she still has to pay around like $10 to $12 for an Uber, but it's not the $20 to $40 that it costs to take an Uber. Without, one way, without GoLink, it would cost $40 to $80 per day, which is, for 30 days, that's, you know, $1,200 to $2,400 a month. A lot of you guys couldn't even afford that. And so I think that making the ride share, ride experience more, better, making the trains, you know, smell nicer, making them cleaner, enticing the middle-class worker to come and ride the trains, it would decrease traffic. You know, DFW is growing, FIFA is coming, the economy is growing, cutting this is not a great idea, but I do think that you can increase revenue with the middle-class worker, enticing them to come to DART. In my generation, 16 to 24, we would write DART, I believe. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Paulette Brody. We have a Paulette Brody, yes we do. Followed by Ann Cohen.
Yes. So I am Paulette Brody. That was my daughter, she told half of my story already. Yes, I was hit by a drunk driver, and I kept looking at, because I was gonna say something else, but I kept looking at the shirts that says "DART Cares." And then Dallas has a logo that says "Dallas Cares," but then Dallas didn't care that I got hit by a drunk driver, because they didn't investigate. DART is changing every single thing that I am able to do now. Because obviously if I'm a drunk driver, I'm not driving anymore. And now, I work in Rolette, and y'all are closing the entire Rolette GoLink, so then that means I can't go to work anymore. So that either means I need to get another job, or I'm gonna have to pay astronomical prices to travel, because I live in Dallas. So I was trying to figure out the caring part. And so I've been kinda just baffled with the whole situation. I think one of my students was actually here earlier today, because they were probably asking about Rolette as well, because the entire Rolette city is being affected by the GoLink that is being canceled, which also means that a lot of my students are gonna be affected as well. I, also the South Dallas, I guess it's affecting my entire family, because my mom is the one who lives in South Dallas, so then their GoLink, I just taught her how to use GoLink, and now GoLink is going away. So I'm not sure, there's a lot of people being affected, and for me, it's three generations that's been affected. I live on one side of town, my mom lives on the different side of town, but both sides of towns are being, as communicated, I guess, at this point. So hopefully, y'all can kinda rethink it, or rearrange, or redesign how y'all are thinking about this, and hopefully, the ones that are being affected will still be able to live their lives, at least peacefully. But I just wanna leave you with a note of, one second. It took one second for my life to be taken away from me. One second for a drunk driver to hit me and keep going. One second, that's all it takes. So I was lively, I danced, I did a whole bunch of things. Now I can barely do anything. One second is all it takes.
Hello. I would like to say thank you to DART for offering DART paratransit. I've been using it ever since I was in high school. But I would like to say that I also benefit from GoLink in the South Dallas area. And like many elderly and disabled people, it is really a wonderful way to get around locally, because with the paratrans services, you have to call a day, you know, in advance. And so it's wonderful to be able to get a ride, you know, to a local store or to the clinic without doing that. And the fares, if fares go up, it's gonna make it a whole lot more difficult to pay for, you know, my ride, being on a fixed income. And that's it, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ann Cohen, is she still here? Number 88? Not, okay. Ian De Silva, followed by Aaron McGee.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am a resident of the Fair Park neighborhood of South Dallas and a member of Dallas Area Transit Alliance. And I just wanna say first off that it's unconscionable that you would cut services to poor, working-class, black and Latino areas, to give Highland Park a shuttle so that their contractors can get to their houses with ease, and to give more services to Plano, and to give Matt Shaheen his GMP blood money. And I call it blood money very deliberately, because as you've heard tonight, many people with these service cuts might die. So I'm just reiterating that. But the other thing is, I think that these cuts are incredibly short-sighted. I wanted to tell you guys a statistic, because I know money is what matters. There was a 2015 report done by the London School of Economics that estimates the total cost of suburban sprawl in the United States takes $1 trillion, trillion with a T, out of our economy every year via externalities such as traffic, pollution, car accidents, infrastructure impacts, and services. So as we are increasing our population here in DFW, we currently have 7.5 million people, we're estimated to reach 10 million by 2040. We cannot continue building highways in perpetuity. We need to be investing in public transit. We cannot, we can't go backwards, we need to be moving forward. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Aaron McGoo, McGrew, followed by Matthew Boss.
I'm representing the Dallas County Republican Party, as well as, I'm a fourth, fifth-generation Berry Creek citizen. Thank you, Rick, for everything you're doing. I also wanna represent the Jack Brewer Foundation, and I'm also campaigning for A21 campaign. The thing I wanna speak on is capitalism. Capitalism is a great thing. The system works, but it's the people and capitalism. We all know that people have a heart. And capitalism, as the father of DART did, he did an opportunity, he gave us an opportunity. Have we gotten away from that opportunity because now we're thinking about the stockholders and the investors? I don't know. But capitalism is great, it's just the people have to change this. I'm gonna leave you with a couple of things as well, statistically-wise. America, the Dallas Cowboys, the American team. You can't get the team without the city. So America is also Dallas. Dallas is the frontier of what America can be. We're getting Wall Street here, and we're also building our own Wall Street as well. So that is telling you that America has something. Also, I wanna let you know that statistically, in America, that 60% of African-Americans are fatherless. Also, there's two crises. There's a fatherless crisis and a wealth gap crisis. The wealth gap, African-Americans only make $44,000 per year, whites make $250,000, Latinos make $60,000. I want you to understand that. I'm gonna leave you with this. I don't care what are y'all doing, because I walk by faith and not by sight, and I know God got this on y'all, and I know this is y'all heart, and I know it's gonna change. This may look like a defeat, but I know it's victory for God. But I wanna leave you with this. There is children that are, this is a hotspot for human trafficking, human trafficking. This is a vulnerability, and if y'all break this rail system, and y'all take away some of these avenues, these teenagers will not be able to go on these rail systems without, because everybody knows that the predator controls their whole body and their assets. But if you leave this DART system how it is going, you could save lives. Thank you, have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Matthew Boss, followed by Zach Hustleton. Hustleton, AB.
Good evening. My name is Matt Boss. I live right here in Dallas. I take DART most days a week to commute and get around the city, including the 209, which I took here tonight, and is on the chopping block with these proposed cuts. So I'm here speaking in opposition to all cuts and all caps for DART service, because it would make my travel times and my transfer times worse, it would make the lives of everyone who's spoken tonight and who is in this room worse, the lives of everyone who uses DART worse. You can't make a system better by making it worse, and you can't make DART better by giving it less. Thank you.
Zach Hustleton, followed by Lenore Hula.
Hey, guys. My name's Zach Hustleton, and I frequently use the DART and the TRE to connect myself with my immediate friends and my family. My family lives in Fort Worth, and I have friends that live off of the downtown DART lines. Decreasing frequency on these routes will directly impact me, it will reduce my options and my flexibility to be able to see my friends and family. But for me, I mean, it's an annoyance, but as I hope y'all have heard over the course of everybody speaking tonight, that for most people, it's not just an inconvenience, it can be the matter between life or death, or between getting food or not getting food, getting to a doctor's appointment, not getting to a doctor's appointment. These cuts are regressive in every sense of the word. It decreases our connectivity as a society, and it moves Dallas backwards. And if you haven't heard by this point how you're affecting the most vulnerable by not reconsidering this, then I'm not sure what else to say, honestly. Yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Connor Hula, followed by John Yamucci.
Hello. My name is Connor Hula. I've been following just about everything DART. I've been following just about everything DART does, probably for the past three years, watched all the board meetings and, you know, I went down to Austin, advocated against HB3187, got probably hundreds of people to call their representatives. So I know what you're all are up against and I know that the general mobility program, which is the main reason behind the service cuts being proposed, is well-intentioned. The intent is to try to stave off legislation. However, I think there's two problems. One, the way the policy is written, it doesn't actually guarantee that these cities who receive money won't go back to Austin next session and try to further cut DART's budget. If there were some agreement they had to sign on to, maybe that could alleviate that concern, but there isn't. Plano or Farmers Ranch or anyone theoretically could take this money from DART and then go back next session and try to pass legislation that would harm DART further. Second, I think that is being funded by service cuts. It's a huge problem. Giving money to cities off the backs of everyone here and all of your riders, I just can't accept that. I personally ride DART every day. These frequency reductions, having these buses come once an hour, sometimes I finish my work and then I just have to catch the next bus. I don't want to have to, you know, maybe I need to catch a bus that arrives at 5:00, but I end work at 5:05, for example, and I have to wait hours. It'll ruin transfers, it really ruins reliability, the whole system. So please do not fund this.
Thank you. John Yamucci, followed by Christopher Weeks.
Thank you and good evening. My name is John Peter Yamucci. I live in central Plano and I am one of those conservative, longtime, able-bodied, white-collar, car-owning Plano residents. I also oppose this motion and this move to cut service. The whole idea of this is it's supposed to benefit Plano and we're supposed to be getting our fair share because of this. I mean, while the proposed service cuts have shafted South Dallas, as people here have explained, but Plano doesn't really get much out of this and we still get service and frequency cuts. So this really doesn't help this conservative, able-bodied, white-collar, car-owning Plano residents. I take the train to work in Richardson, I take the train to hang out with friends in Dallas. So if you want to help out Plano, increase our frequency and also please do not cut South Dallas's service. Thank you.
Christopher Weeks, followed by Leanne Holman.
Good evening, my name's Chris Weeks and I'm a resident of Richardson, Texas, and I'm also a member of DATA and I am strongly opposed to the service cuts that y'all have proposed. I'd like to specifically call out the frequency reductions on all the 200 series buses as well as the light rail. Over the past three years since moving to DFW, I've honestly been impressed by the service and performance of DART and it would be a shame to let all that progress that you have made since the pandemic go to waste. The cuts you're proposing would be very disrespectful to the citizens of DART who have had your back since the beginning and I urge you to reconsider these cuts, reconsider the GMP, and investigate all available alternative funding measures to prevent these cuts from happening. Thank you.
Leanne Holman, followed by Angelo Diaz.
First of all, I'd like to say I've been at this board several times and I've addressed this first issue several times. This board does not reflect the demographics of the ridership, okay? If the ridership is 60% African-American, and I only see two African-Americans here, I get a feeling that there is an insensitivity here. I certainly hope that you have heard the statements that have been made by these people, particularly from the southern sector. And for me to say that race may not have a component in this, I wouldn't be living in the United States, okay? Now, as far as these GMP cuts are concerned, DART has a $1.8 billion budget. The GMP is 40-some-odd million. That's about 2-point-something percent. Where are the accountants who can come up with cuts within the budget, austerity, if you will, to make up for these outlays so that this money doesn't have to be cut from services from people who have come up to you one after another and say they desperately need them? Where is the state of Texas that has a $22 billion surplus? Why aren't they contributing to what you guys need to make this transit system work? And where are the representatives who represent these different districts, senate, state, in the state house? Where are the philanthropists who have the billions and trillions of dollars that run around here in Dallas, Texas, that will not or they don't come in to try to help you all maintain services for these people who need them? Where are these approaches and have they been looked at before these cuts are made?
Thanks, sir. Angelo Diaz, followed by Phil Villar. By Phil Villar. Number 103 and 104.
I stand before you as a Dallas College Richardson student and son who rides on DART every day. I used to get around on just $1.50 mornings and evenings. Now it's $6 a day for a day pass since three hours is not enough and with proposed frequency changes, you're crazy, but three-hour pass should be a fair at this point. Now imagine that mounting costs on having to go to college almost every weekday and groceries. Yeah, that mounts up fast. Now I imagine others like me, others who go to Dallas College, Collin College, UTE, SMU, people who sometimes have to take two or more buses or trains just to get across town just to live. And we can't forget about my fellow students with disabilities. They have it far worse, especially with these frequency changes, fare changes, yeah, they're gonna get even worse. Let's look at the facts on how we ended up here. Plano stirred up a mess after DART passed their audit and in order to appease them, let Plano and some cities join forces and conduct their own audit with tweaked parameters so they could lie and have proof that DART was abusing them. Some of these cities are about to get blessed by the brand-new Silver Line and their foul play would have caused utter disaster to all of DART and other railway companies. Now you would want to appease them by inflicting self-sabotage to your own company. You would bend the knee to liars, to appease people who have never ridden the bus or train in their lives, who have been lobbied by big corporations to sabotage transit at the expense of the people, to sell us out to cities who call people like us undesirables and vagrants. I think not. No caps, no cuts.
Julia Chalker, followed by, oh, do this one more time, Phil Villar. He may not be.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julia Chalker and I'm the Director of the Arc of DFW Area, an organization that supports individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities, or ADD. I'm also a retired educator who spent many years working with young adults whose utilization of paratransit services was a game-changer in achieving greater independence and self-autonomy. Finally, I'm the sister of a brother with autism, Bobby, who also used DART paratransit services for many years to get to his job, helping him to be a contributing member of our community. I'm here to speak on behalf of our members as well as other individuals with disabilities who rely on these services every day, not just for convenience, but for independence, dignity, and access to basic human needs. Almost doubling paratransit fares, reducing the service area, and removing the $1 fee fare for connection to fixed routes, it may look like a solution on paper, but in practice, it creates a barrier, one that prevents people with disabilities from getting to work, medical appointments, grocery stores, community services, and support networks, all things that contribute to a quality life. For many, there's simply no alternative transportation. These changes won't impact all riders equally. They'll disproportionately harm those who already face significant system challenges and limited options, especially in the state that we live in. Disability services in Texas are almost at the bottom and so it would be so great if this is not yet one other fight that we have to make. The decisions that you make can isolate people, jeopardize their health, and reduce their chances for full participation. So we need DART to be more than a transportation provider. We need it to be a partner in equity, inclusion, and opportunity. Cutting routes and raising fares moves us in the wrong direction. So please reconsider these changes, invest in solutions that support all riders, especially those who need it most. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Kane Vincent, followed by Amanda Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Kane Vincent. I live in Deep Ellum and I work as a firefighter and a paramedic here in Dallas. I'm speaking today as a private citizen and a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. I urge you not to move forward with these proposed cuts and reductions in anticipation of the passing of a general mobility fund. Consider this. Plano has already made it clear that your proposed 5% rebate offer will not satisfy them. They've said 5% isn't enough and they've shown they're willing to go over the head of this board to get what they want by seeking state legislation on the issue. Why give in to ill-intentioned policy? I strongly believe Plano and the other suburban DART-member cities deserve a better return on their tax dollars, but these regressive cuts and reductions are not the way to get us there. Cuts in preparation for a possible general mobility fund right now are short-sighted. North Texas is growing fast and we should be doubling down on investments in public transit, not pulling back. This isn't savvy negotiation, it's premature surrender that weakens the system that working-class and vulnerable people rely on. Let's just tell it like it is. Plano's goal is not more successful public transit. The point of the GMP is for these cities to undemocratically redirect their 1% sales tax to subsidize their wealthier, car-centric lifestyles without having to go through their own city politics to get it done. Please do not help them make this happen. Help the people that need you. Thank you.
Amanda Brooks, followed by Christopher Gomes.
Hello, I'm Amanda Brooks. I work here in downtown Dallas and I take the DART in every day from Garland. Many of my coworkers also take the DART in every day because traffic in Dallas is terrible and parking is expensive. It also takes half the time driving out of Dallas does in the rush hour. I think it is a mistake to cut service and raise costs. It will only harm the most vulnerable, especially those who use public paratransit, and force more people onto already crowded roads or cut off their access to transportation entirely. Thank you.
Warren Pena, followed by Dorothy Benson.
Good evening, my name is Chris and I'm here because public transit is essential, it's a necessity for thousands of people across our region, but some say that these changes are necessary because funding shifts, inflation, new service requests, and early opening of the Silver Line. I understand budget pressures, but let's be honest, this is not a minor adjustment. If approved, these cuts would mark the largest rollback of transit service in DART's history and these changes would not impact everyone equally. They would hurt the people who rely on the system the most. That includes working-class families, seniors, people with disabilities, and essential workers who have no other option but DART. Yes, some cities are asking for a better return on their sales tax, but we cannot balance this system at the expense of core service. So let me be clear. Working people deserve to get to work on time. Families deserve safe and reliable public transit and every rider deserves to know that the service that they count on will be there tomorrow. Eliminating nine bus routes, cutting a GoLink zone in South Dallas, and shrinking paratransit coverage is not sustainability, it is abandonment. We should be expanding service, not cutting it. We should be making transit more accessible, not harder to use. And I know that some routes have low ridership, but when service is frequent and reliable, people come back. That's been proven again and again. Other cities that have implemented affordable public transit have seen real results. Ridership goes up, assaults on drivers go down, people get where they need to go safely. And the result is a cleaner, safer, more connected region and the Dallas area deserves that too. I urge you to reject this proposal. Do not raise fares, do not cut service, do not make it harder for the people who depend on this system to live their lives. This is public transit, should serve the public, not punish them. Thank you.
Warren Pena, followed by Dorothy Benson.
Hi, my name is Warren Pena. I'm a resident of the city of Plano and a member of the Dallas Area Transit Alliance. I'm here tonight to speak against the reduction to rail, the reduction to rail frequency. I've spoken here before, you know, I work in downtown Dallas, I ride in every day under red or orange, whichever comes first. These reductions in frequency is really gonna have a negative impact, both on my own commute to work and also just getting around the city. I often take DART on the weekends just to go to stuff around town. It's great, you know, just to avoid the freeways, but these reductions are really going to hurt. Also, as a frequent traveler, I would love to be able to take the Silver Line from Plano to DFW Airport, but one-hour frequency just doesn't make it viable. It really, really hurts there. So, yeah, so I'm just here to speak against the cuts. I really hope that we can avoid that. Thank you so much.
All right, Dorothy Benson, followed by Rodney Foreman.
Good evening, board members. I know y'all didn't think it was gonna be this many people here. I didn't either. I haven't been here in three years, but I'm back. You rang the bell on me the last time and what did I tell you? I don't care how many times you rang it, I'm gonna say what I've come here to say. This time, I'm just talking about the 378 bus, which we catch y'all changed. Y'all took the 21 Redbird away from Redbird. I've been riding the buses for over 50 years. I come from South Dallas and that's all they had was buses. Y'all took the 21 Redbird away. People had to walk three blocks. Then you changed the bus to the 378. Now you finna take that away. Why? They say it ain't that many people riding. You lying. Your machine is lying. People are parked on Redbird parking lot. It ain't right, but you don't care. Y'all don't care about the southern sector, period. But let me tell you this here. You take a stick pin and each one of you nationalities, stick your finger, what color comes out? Red. Everybody's the same, but we are not treated the same. And you know what? That man upstairs ain't pleased with it. God shut the whole world down when the pandemic. And if you keep doing what you're doing and not treating the people, his people right, he'll shut it down again.
Rodney Foreman, followed by Jason Grant.
Hello, good evening. That was my bus buddy. I went to the pre-meeting in June and I had it all in my head, what I was gonna say. But something I didn't realize there is that DART offers the paratransit services. I was not aware of that. That is something that's bigger than all of us and we can't do away with that service or start limiting it. These are my neighbors, your neighbors. We've got to move forward, we've got to make DART better. Freedom and frequency, that's been repeated a lot tonight. Like my neighbor said, I started on the 21. The 21 bus. It was eliminated. So we moved to the 378. Now there's talk of eliminating the 378. Well, that could eliminate a lot of us from using DART also. I just want to say in closing here that instead of figuring out why... I just want to say in closing here that instead of figuring out why DART isn't working here, let's figure out why we have low ridership. What caused that? How do we get ridership up? It's not by eliminating routes. It's not by making them further apart. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Jason Grant, followed by Dr. Sharon Middlebrook or Jane Harden. They both have the same number. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jason Grant. I live downtown. I have a lot of options for transit. Most days of the week, I ride DART because all in all, it's a pretty good option, and I want to. I want to use your service. I think the changes and improvements you've been making in the last four years are great. I've noticed and appreciate them. Even the DART Mobility and Motion podcast, surprisingly good. I like that one. But the proposed service cuts, and especially the frequency reductions, are a big step backwards. Frequency is systemically important. You reduce that, you reduce ridership, you reduce your power as a transit agency, which I don't want to see. I know that public transit could be improved so much, including in cities like Plano and Irving, and a lot of us are doing what little things we can to improve that situation. But service reductions are not the way to do it, and I hope that you will not take away your own power and stay strong as DART and as public transit. Thank you.
I'm R. Jane Harden, and I live in the Cedars. My husband and I moved to Dallas and built a home there so specifically we could walk to the Cedar Station and I could get to work at Medical City, and so I commuted until I retired. We also built there knowing that as we aged, and for the sake of Dallas, were not driving so much, that the DART would be there. Now, I scratched everything I was going to say tonight because I've been sitting here all night, just like y'all. And here's the deal: There's really only one thing that can be said about all of this. It's classism. That's all it is. It's just classism. And listening, I used to actually go up to people when commuting on the train and, or well, the DART rail, excuse me, and ask them to tell me a little bit about their story. And it was always so interesting, and I learned so much, and I learned so much tonight. I don't know what I would do if I were in some of these people's situation. I'm fortunate enough not to be. I might be tomorrow. I don't know what y'all would do. Ask yourselves that. If you were dealing with the same set of circumstances, and so basically, I want to beg all of you to have a spine, and anybody says, "Cut services" or "Raise prices on DART," tell them to sign off. That's it.
Had a red card, okay. Jay Lenhurst. Jay Lenhurst. I don't have a card here that has your name on it, but we should, we'll find it. Maybe. Thank you.
Good evening to the board, and thank you for your undivided attention. And thank you to everyone who showed up tonight to let your voice be heard. It's very important during these times like this. I am here to voice my opposition to the fare and service changes. I am here to speak from a place of position where the proposed changes actually will not affect me. However, it is important for me to be here to show support with those in the DART ridership community because I'm a part of that community. In your brochure, it states that this is the largest proposed cuts in DART's 40-year history, and as one gentleman stated before, that this is the largest public hearing that you all have had. This is my first time coming to a public hearing, and so I'm proud to be here to speak and support our community. As someone who has been a nonprofit for over 20 years, project management and data analysis for over 10 years, I wasn't sure how I wanted to address you all this evening. You've heard personal stories and touching stories about how DART has provided freedom and mobility to those that have not had independence in their lives. You have heard facts about how these cuts will impact people who are on fixed incomes with increases in other areas in this time. You also know that ridership has been affected since the first big changes, since COVID, and even just three months ago when you all increased the prices. This past March alone. I should have prepared some data because I know as a board, that's all you all understand. However, I do understand this, is that these people have come here straight from work today, just as I have, to make their voices heard. I have been a customer of DART since I was a college student in Paul Quinn College. This is how I introduce the people to this city when they come and visit. I tell them to get on the DART rail, and we ride around. So as a young lady, I'm going to skip ahead since I'm running out of time. This is how you attract ridership to this city and the middle-class community, and so that way you don't affect our ridership by increasing prices and making it affordable for all riders. So I'm going to close with this: No cuts to mobility services, no cuts to frequency of routes, and no increases to fares. So looking at these orange shirts that DART cares, why don't you show the city that you care?
Jay Lenhurst, followed by Rexster Chambers.
Hello, Jay Lenhurst from Dallas. I will try to keep this at a high frequency, unlike the service you're trying to do, so I will do this in one minute. I take the 305. It's set to be eliminated. I think you could be more creative with these cuts. Bring the 308 down to the 305. Your goal number five of Transit 2045 says you want to increase express service, but you've taken away the 210. You're thinking about taking away the 305. If you keep doing this, you're going to go against those goals of attracting ridership, connecting people to job centers. So I think there's a lot of needs and wants here, and they aren't being balanced properly. There's a lot of people who want shuttles and lots of great things. That sounds nice, but against people whose lives are being upended, whose lives are potentially being threatened by these cuts, that doesn't seem to pan out. So I do think you should take a second look at some of these asks from these cities who want shuttles and stuff. I don't think the kind people of Plano, the kind people in the rest of these cities, would support that type of impact to their fellow citizens. Thank you.
Rexster Chambers, followed by Derek Hodge.
My name is Rexster Chambers. I stand before you today not as a proud American public servant for both my nation and for this great American city, but as a daily user of the DART system. Specifically, this is regarding the proposed cuts to the bus lines for the 209. The proposed cuts and elimination of the 209 bus line would represent a significant loss for the city of Dallas and its residents. These routes serve as vital connectors for transit users traveling between Uptown, Knox Anderson, SMU DART Station, and downtown, key areas that form the backbone of our city's economic and residential landscape. And as a daily commuter who depends on these lines, I can attest to the critical importance. These routes provide the only public transit service near my apartment, and their elimination would force me to walk over a mile to the nearest bus stop. Streetcars offer charm and appeal to tourists, but they are not a practical substitute for working commuters who need efficient, reliable transportation to reach their jobs. These neighborhoods are experiencing unprecedented population growth, and many new residents, including myself, do not own vehicles. Maintaining reliable and predictable bus service through one of the city's primary economic corridors is essential for continuing to attract talent and opportunities. A robust public transit network that offers multiple options, buses, streetcars, and wide-sharing services is fundamental to a thriving urban environment. It's important to recognize that the 209 line serves a diverse ridership, including many service workers who depend on these routes for their daily commute, which I can attest to. This is not merely a bus line serving an affluent area. It's a critical piece of infrastructure that supports working people throughout our community, all the way stretching from Love Field down to downtown and further beyond. I urge you to reconsider these proposed cuts and recognize the vital role that the 209 bus line plays in maintaining Dallas as an accessible and connected city for all residents, and I am against any proposed cuts for any proposed cuts for any lines that are being proposed across the board. Thank you.
Derek Hodge, followed by Mary Winterspoon. Witherspoon.
Hello, my name is Derek Hodge, and I just want to, y'all know, the, I don't want no paratransit, I mean, the rail line, rail line train not to change at all. All the buses in Plano to change at all. And people want to drive and travel there all the time, and I don't want it to change, never. I want it to stay the same, sort of other people do. And I feel like I'm just a little disappointed about trains changing and buses changing in Plano. And I'm so disappointed, too, a little bit, and I don't want it to change, don't want it to change at all, never. And I just don't want it to change at all, never, period. Thank you.
Mary Witherspoon, followed by Brenda Gurmuhrthi.
Mary Witherspoon of Dallas. I live four miles west of here. I want to thank you for investing your time listening to our stories while we invest our time having a voice on this. As been said before, nobody chooses to be in the disability community. It happens to you. For after 50 years of having full sight, I went down to 10 degrees range of vision. I lost my job. I was not a safe driver, so I sold my car. And then I learned about DART paratransit, and it was such a blessing to do basic things like go to the grocery store and go to the doctor. It is a basic need. Now, if I had been in a small community, I might have had Harry say, "Mary, I'll take you to the doctor's office on Tuesday." Sally could have said, "Hey, Mary, I'll take you to church on Wednesday." Fred could say, "Mary, I'll take you to the grocery store on Thursday." You are my community. You help take care of me. I thank you for that. I know there is a business reason for the plan that was developed. I hope you hear the fear in people's voices tonight to change that because that plan is going to harm so many people, and there is no option for me that is economically viable to go to the doctor, to go to the grocery store, to go to church. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I appreciate it.
Not bad. All right. Hi, my name is Brenda Gurmuhrthi, and I live in Dallas. As a North Oak Cliff resident, I use the 9 most frequently, but before that, I use the 101 to get to work at Sunset High School. I moved to Dallas in 2018, and I've seen the ups and downs in service over the past seven years. The long-promised 15-minute frequencies for the 101 during peak hours were a game-changer, and one reason I selected my current apartment was its proximity to the 9, a frequent bus line. Now, of course, thanks to Plano, Irving, and other cities demanding the general mobility fund, these frequencies are in question, are in jeopardy. Dart riders come from many walks of life, some ride by choice and then some by circumstance. But regardless of where dart riders and the people here tonight come from, we've shown tremendous loyalty to DART. We've given you our money, we've given you our time. We've ridden the bus when it was 10 degrees outside and when it was 110 degrees outside. We've waited at bus stops for hours. Many folks on the board, I'm sure, don't know what it's like to have to change your shirt and your bra when you get to work because you sweat through them on the walk from the bus stop, but I've done that, and many workers do that, too, and still we ride. All this to say, it would be a huge mistake to throw committed riders under the bus, no pun intended, and sacrifice us on the altar of city officials who are willing to sell out DART without a second thought about what their residents would say. Funding the 5% general mobility program is a gateway to the gradual defunding and dismantling of public transit in the fourth-largest metro area in the United States. It's an embarrassment that anyone ever considered asking us, the riders, to sacrifice to make these politicians happy. As a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, I would like to congratulate y'all on finding one thing that communists, socialists, and Republicans alike all agree on, that these cuts are bad and not to do them. Thank you.
Evo Lineberry, followed by Camry Brown.
Hello, good evening. My name is Evo Lineberry. I've lived in Dallas for my entire life. I'm a business owner, and I serve on the boards of the Trinity River Audubon Center and Green Space Dallas. Both of these organizations work towards furthering access to urban green spaces. I'm here asking that DART reconsider its proposal to eliminate the bus lines that make our city more connected. The 242 is the line that grants me access to all the roles I get to play in the city. This is the only line running through my neighborhood of Lake Highlands, and I'm here representing my fellow riders who can't be here because they're at work, taking care of their families, and putting kids to bed. I'm a homeowner, and I specifically bought my house because of the proximity to this line. It is how I got here tonight. My hope is that public transportation can grow in its use throughout my neighborhood, contributing more revenue to DART's operations, but this can only happen if we continue to expand routes across the city. As an alternative to discontinuing the 242, I've made a very reasonable suggestion to DART staff that the line extend to include Walnut Hill Station in its route. It's a small change that can make a huge difference to increase ridership and better connect our neighborhood. I appreciate y'all's consideration to keep and extend the 242, along with all the other bus lines that so many rely on. Thank you.
Camry Brown, followed by Matthew Ilman.
Hello, my name is Camry Brown, and I'm a resident of Irving and work in Dallas. I want to start off and say I'm opposed to all the proposed changes. I live in a one-car household, and I've used DART for over five years and the TRE for over two years and counting. I used all the services at some point to get to school, work, community events, or visiting friends. I've seen many things in my years of using the service: students going to school, college, blue-and-white-collar workers on their way to work, people on their way to doctor's appointments, or going to the VA center. We need higher frequency and more lines to connect the community, not a decrease. We need more GoLink zones and bus lines. They help people who don't have cars to get to their next train or bus. I have seen how important they are to so many people in DFW. Once heading home from work on TRE, I overheard a mother with her two children talking about how she used GoLink to help get to the station in the morning so she could take her kids to daycare and for her to go to work. An increase in fares and decrease in service will affect people all over the community. This is going to create problems for DART in the future and hurt the public right now. I am moving in August, and my first thought was finding a, an apartment close to a DART station. I use DART for many reasons: to avoid traffic, so I could read instead of facing the pressure of all the driving, for paying for the parking spots in downtown. I also am a terrible driver and don't want people to experience that. It's better if I just use DART. It's better for the environment. And just as the last note, it's, these changes are bad, and it would be bad for everybody. Thank you.
Matthew Ilman, followed by Sonya. Mateo Alman, followed by Sonya Bolden.
Good evening, my name is Mateo Alman, I'm a resident of the city of Dallas. I wanted to take a moment and thank you for taking the time to listen to riders and our feedback before you guys make decisions that impact all of us. I'm opposed to the proposed frequency reductions for the light rail TRE and the Silver Line. As someone who's fortunate to work on the light rail system, I take advantage of it regularly, I'm a daily rider. Riders and non-riders alike see the rail system in the DFW region as the core of this transportation system. The public expects a reasonable level of frequent service when they show up to a rail system. Riders who show up and there's not a train there will leave the system, and these riders won't come back. When an occasional rider shows up to a stop on a Saturday to try out and use DART, and they see the next wait for the next red line train is 30 minutes, they're going to remove DART from their list of options in terms of transportation. It will be an incredible waste of this infrastructure investment you've made in rail to see frequency reduced to 30 minutes during the weekends, 20 minutes on rush hours, and to an hour on the TRE and the Silver Line. The DART system is a great asset. It improves my quality of life for myself and for others around me, and public transit has influenced my decision to move to Dallas for work. Frequent service on the core routes, especially the rail system, should be considered essential, and I'm very concerned about how the usefulness of the DART system will decrease if the rail system frequencies are reduced. This is the time to find creative solutions to this problem, and reducing frequency and reducing service is not the answer. Thank you.
Sonya Bolden, followed by Betty Gubey.
Okay, good evening, DART. My name is Sonya Bolden, and I work with Fresenius Kidney Care Medical Care. We are the number-one dialysis center in North America, and a part of what we do is I help to take care of sick patients, and these patients really rely on DART service. It is not a day or a week that doesn't go by that I'm constantly calling DART, setting up transportation, filing grievances, just all kinds of things to advocate. So when I found out about this, I was like, okay, I have to stand in solidarity for all the patients that are on dialysis. So basically, I mean, I had a whole script of what I wanted to say, and I'm like, but everything was already said tonight. We don't agree with the $6 increase, because that's, if you know about dialysis, that's three times a week, they miss one treatment, that person can die, literally, like, literally die, and that's why I'm here tonight. We already have patients at the $3.50 who cannot afford the $3.50. So if we make it $6, I mean, we have patients who miss already dialysis because they can't afford the $3.50, so at $6, you can only imagine. We have 120 patients that we serve at our clinic, and out of the 120, over 50% use the DART service, probably 50 to 60%. So one of the things that we are going to propose is, is it possible that DART can consider using Medicaid for those that are eligible for Medicaid? Is there a possibility that they can get billed or reimbursed for Medicaid services directly for rides? That is one of the things that we do propose. I just want to yield the rest of my time. I did, was able to get a petition with over 40 signatures that I just wanted to share. These are all the patients who couldn't make it tonight, but they are concerned about the cost going up, two pages. I also brought with me a patient advocate, Ms. Betty Gorrie, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time to her so that she can talk to you.
Thank you.
My voice carries, I don't have to get up in this microphone. I'm speaking for, I'm speaking for all of the dialysis patients, for all of the senior citizens that ride DART. Now, my husband first. My husband's been riding DART since January the 7th of 2002, and he got a letter from DART that kicked him off the bus like this. You have been certified as eligible for paratransit services on conditional basis until Saturday, June 17, 2028. I don't appreciate you all kicking my husband off the bus after he's accommodated, y'all, 25 years. He's never missed a dialysis treatment, not nothing that we did that was so wonderful, but through my heavenly Father, he made sure he made it to dialysis. And I'm pretty sure some of y'all know my name. I probably cuss some of y'all out on the phone. And because things that y'all do are not correct. You all do what you want to do to appease yourself, and that's not what God sent you there for. God sent you there for what He said. DART paratransit. DART paratransit is to help people who need help, not when you want to do it or how you want to do it. So, with that being said, the other dialysis patients that need y'all, when you go to bed tonight, ask God to help you to do the right thing by these people that have been accommodating you for 20, 25 years. Don't cut off the hand that has fed you, and do not cut off your nose to spite your No cuts, no caps, no changes. Only thing you need to change is get somewhere and think about other people and change your mind.
Frederick Frost, followed by Carlson Sharpless. Is there a Frederick Frost? Or not? Number 3131? No. 132, Mr. Sharpless. That'd be it.
Hello, my name is Carlson Sharpless. I'm a resident of Dallas at an apartment just off of LBJ Central Station, and I'm here specifically to talk about the proposed cuts to frequency, particularly for the light rail and the commuter rail lines. For the light rail, I have had experience with the light rail during the time period where it had 30-minute frequencies in the evenings, and it was a very frustrating experience to come up to a station, realize you just missed something, and you have to wait half an hour in order to keep going. Now, that was something I could deal with, for sure, but that was also something that was happening in the middle, happening in the middle of the night, whereas with the proposed ones during the weekends, which is a time when I, and I believe a lot of other people, tend to ride DART more frequently, and because of that, having to wait 30 minutes in the heat of the day is a very unpleasant experience. And this is even more worse for the proposed changes to the TRE and the Silver Line, which will leave people stuck with, stuck out in the Texas heat or cold for almost, for an hour. This is especially bad for the Silver Line, given that no one will have had a chance to ride it with a normal frequency, and thus, they will be a lot less likely to be able to have built it into their schedules in the first place. Ultimately, just in addition to all the, to all of the, to all the changes that will happen to buses, which will have the same or perhaps even worse issues, the fact of the matter is that the proposed frequency changes are just too infrequent to be useful to a lot of people, and that will result in lower ridership, and also just lower utilization of the system in general, since so many people use these as connections. And as one person who spoke here earlier eloquently put it, "Frequency is freedom." Thank you.
Adam Ferry, followed by Kayden Martin.
Hello and thank you. The Dallas Metroplex is growing, not shrinking. I'm evidence of this. I've lived here over two years, and like so many others, I've come here for economic opportunity, for work. During this time, I've taken DART every day between Garland and Dallas, and I've grown to love it. I see not only how the service impacts me, but how critical it is for those who have no other option. We're really lucky to live in a growing world-class city, but keeping the city world-class is up to our leaders, it's up to you. Transit service cuts, while the population grows, is not a decision that a world-class city makes. A great transit agency does not abandon the people who need it most, your schoolchildren, the disabled, the elderly, and all of those who are simply unable to afford a car. A city planning to host the World Cup in international crowds should not reduce its transit service. Moving forward with the plan as proposed shows no empathy and no confidence in our growing community. Do not allow cuts when we need growth. Let DART continue to be a shining example of successful transit in the South. And all of you, you stand right now at a pivotal moment in DART's history. I believe you will all make the right choice to invest in these people behind me and to believe in the community you serve. Thank you.
Kayden Martin, followed by Ariel Herrera, followed by Patrick Morgan.
Good evening, Chairman Slajel and the rest of the DART board. I am a member of DATA, and I'm here to oppose these service cuts. I have been a richland student for the past two years, and I paid for DART through the Higher Education Pass Program, which means I had to take a certain number of classes for my tuition to cover DART. I now attend the University of North Texas, which subsidizes DCTA through a $3.50 per credit hour fee, which is higher than a DART three-hour pass. UTD has the highest bus route on DART, but that's still a contracted route. In the last legislative session, Matt Shaheen and various other members of this state government introduced bills to reduce funding for DART with a general mobility program at the state level. This board and myself helped kill Matt Shaheen's bill, and now his changes are up for a vote at your level. In 2002, Lilo Palakai told the grand councilwoman that she owned Stitch, and that if the grand councilwoman took Stitch, she was stealing. The same context applies here. If you take funding from transit and cut service as a result to support Matt Shaheen's political agenda, you're stealing from taxpayers. Thank you.
Ariel Herrera, followed by Patrick Morgan.
Hello, my name is Ariel Herrera, I'm part of the Dallas Area Transit Alliance. DART is one of the main reasons why I've become a much more independent adult. Ever since I graduated high school last year, I'm now going into my sophomore year. So, I oppose these service cuts because they deny people, young children, that people cannot drive, the disabled, and others, the opportunity to be, to travel independently to contribute to the prosperity of our city. I think that we, I think that DART should try to increase ridership by increasing route frequency, improving bus stops, and speeding up buses with transit priority. We should not be cutting routes or increase, dramatically increase in the paratransit fare, because we know from all the people here that they are the ones who need it most. I think that we should think of the potential that DART can offer to transport people to their colleges, sports games, concerts, work, school, musicals, and the countless other trips that people may want or need to make throughout the Metroplex. We should, we should not be cutting DART funding, so I oppose this GMP, because it would cut DART's funding and would lead to lower ridership, and thank you.
Patrick Morgan, followed by Joshua McNair.
Hello, my name is Patrick, and I live in Dallas, North Dallas. I'm also a member of the Dallas Area Transit Alliance. I, like many of my peers, are here opposing the service cuts and frequency reductions. I just wanted to say, wow. Look at how many people showed up. Look at how many people were willing to take time out of their evening, time with their family, to come here and tell you how important this service is to their lives. And think about how many people who are not able to make it here due to the other obligations that they have. I hope all the city councils and state legislators who say DART's not important and DART's not providing a good service are listening. I hope the mayors and councils who have been talking about withdrawing from DART are listening. I hope they hear how impactful DART is today. I hope they see how even this 5% cut will cripple the system that already sometimes struggle to serve its sprawling 700-square-mile service area. And maybe they can see what an economic driver DART can be in the future. And I just want to leave you with this one last thought. If this is the response you get with a potential 5% cut, what do you think will happen if there's a 25% cut, like, was proposed at the state legislature? Thank you.
Joshua McNair, followed by number 140, we'll get the name.
Yep. So I think I had just enough people before me to get this speech finished, for the most part, about five hours or so. My name is Joshua McNair, I'm a coordinator for Sunrise Movement Dallas. As a paratransit user, I was initially going to speak on that, but after some reflection, I realized just how much damage the general mobility budget will do overall. Please do not pass this. I know HB 3187 was scary, but the people behind me today, as well as hundreds to thousands of others, banded together to stop it. We don't have to compromise with people like those who wanted to pass that bill. This budget is cutting essential services to poor and working-class individuals across the country, to people like me who can't drive due to disabilities, to those who simply don't want to pay a fortune to own a car, and to those traveling from abroad. You do not have to kowtow to these politicians. We don't owe them a thing. They go behind our backs to pass their slimy bills. You give them an inch, they will take a mile. You give them a 5% cut, they'll keep whittling away until it's 100% cut. They represent a tiny but rich and vocal fraction of the population who simply don't want poor people even seeing their area of town, much less stepping foot there. As a certain former deputy mayor said, "You're sending the trash up north with DART services." These people resent us. This frequency change, route reduction, and increase the fees will strain people who need it the most. DART is how I and hundreds of thousands of others have the ability to traverse the city. As I mentioned, epilepsy keeps me from being able to drive, and this is the only way I can get to work. To my loved ones, to activities around town, it is essential to our community and keeping Dallas together. We need these services as they are and the ability to expand it to places that so desperately need it, like our people in South Dallas. Not our neighbors, our people, because they are as much a part of Dallas County as everyone else and deserve full access to transit. Climate disasters aren't coming, they're here, and it's now or never to do everything we can to prevent it getting worse, and public transit is crucial to this. Affordable, public, accessible transit should be a basic human right. Thank you.
Could you please send the person, number 140, and they can state, he can state his name or she can, and we will make sure we have the name and a card. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paula Barbier. This is my husband, Don Barbier, he's propping me up. Okay.
Thank you.
Please save Parker Road Station, Plano, Texas. We are Paula and Don Barbier from McKinney, Texas. We are seniors on a fixed income. We love our $3 daytime pass. It fits our budget. I have multiple sclerosis, and my husband has a heart problem discovered 18 months ago. DART and the Parker Road Station, the station you're getting rid of has become a godsend and major part of our lives, especially in the last year now. We are going to lose Parker Road Station. Please don't close the station. Parker Road Station is the northernmost station at the I-75 Plano, Texas. We drive 20 to 40 minutes south from McKinney, Texas, to get to the Parker Road Station to catch the red or orange lines headed south. We did that tonight. Most of our major medical doctors are at UT Southwestern. We go there every month, if not several times a month. We use DART to get from Parker Road Station through downtown Dallas for business. We don't have to drive to UT Southwestern anymore, yay. It takes us almost two hours to drive one way to get to UT Southwestern from McKinney. My husband's heart condition limits our driving distance. He had four heart surgery ablations last 18 months and four overnight ER visits. I do all the distance driving. If I'm on DART, I don't have to live through the stress of driving long distances in traffic, which is literally like sitting in a parking lot. We use Parker Road Station and DART to get to downtown Dallas on business. We've used DART from Parker Road Station to get to the State Fair of Texas. We also need to visit family in Fort Worth. We used to drive there. My mother is in a home in Fort Worth. We can no longer drive to Fort Worth from McKinney because it's too long a drive, it's too costly, it's too dangerous, especially, oh, that's it, driving McKinney, Texas at night. Okay. But we... oh, that's it, driving McKinney, Texas at night. Okay. But we discovered the TRE. We love the TRE. Thank you. $3.00. We get to go back and forth all day. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I have more to say.
We're going to have to do the same thing with 141. If you would send that person forward, we'll have to get his name and get him filled out a card afterwards. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody. My name is Timothy Hubert. So this is my first time coming to one of these and Dallas is like home for me now. I moved here from Atlanta and I hadn't realized how much it is home for me until I've waited this long to speak. So I would say I appreciate you all's time. So I live in the West Dallas neighborhood. I love West Dallas. Like some of the other areas, not been impacted as much with some of the cuts, but both the 28 and the 106, both that I have to ride coming back, I work downtown, are being extended. So it's going to take, one is a delay getting to work and then coming home for the 106 specifically. Now it's an hour as opposed to, which is still in rush hour, which doesn't really make sense. So late coming in and then now an extremely long way trying to get back. That area, West Dallas, has seen a lot of growth, a lot of building, a lot of communities, a lot of that community has been built out. So delaying service and cutting service in an area that is very popular and thriving right now doesn't make as much sense. I also noted that you're expanding shuttle service at Legacy West, 431, 432, and a possible 433, but then you're cutting like pair transit. I think pair transit and not raising cost for working class people, middle class is probably a little bit more important than people being able to get to the Gucci store, which I'm still, I'm still trying to fully understand that. You're really for people that are less likely to ride it in the first place. Someone mentioned earlier, and I'll be real quick, alluded to something that Martin Luther King said. Martin Luther King said that it's a cruel thing to tell a bootless man to pull himself up by his bootstraps. You all are not only telling bootless people to pull themselves up by bootstraps, but people that can't even wear boots. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kerry Yarborough, followed by Joseph Miller.
Kerry Yarborough, I was going to speak about the changes to DART tonight, but I think we've had enough people speak about that. And as I tally at this point, if we stopped the public speaking and just tallied it up at this point, it's been 100% of the people that's opposed to the changes. And I've not seen or heard anybody in the whole night, even one person, say that we need to put these changes in place, we need to hurt the poor people, we need to take away their services, take away their trips to the grocery store, trips to, out of their food deserts and stuff. Not one person. So I think if people on the board are going to listen to anybody, or if anybody cares out there on this board, you would vote not to do these changes and to find somewhere else to do that. And the whole reason this thing was done was on the back of wealthy people that didn't want to pay property tax in Plano, and that's not the reason to cut services to these people. But an even more pressing concern has come up, and it's getting much worse, and that is about public safety. I'm taking my life in my hands every single time I get on a DART train. There is never a police officer on the train, not one time out of 100. And there's so much crime on there. I see criminal activity every single day on there, four and five and six and eight times. I'm getting nasty toxic poison put in my face multiple times every time I get on the DART train because nobody cares. Nobody cares that we don't have police officers there. We need a police officer on every single DART train and every single car. And those private duty security officers, let me tell you about those private duty security officers. They're not worth a penny. Every single penny DART has ever spent since day one on a private security guard is a total waste of taxpayers' money. We need extra certified police officers in Texas on every single train, every train platform, and probably on some of the buses and bus stops. I've had toxic poison put in my face till I'm sick and tired of it. And I'm sure plenty of other people on the trains and buses have too. We have got to get the crime under control. I'm seeing drug activity daily on those trains. I've seen all kinds of criminal activity right in front of my eyes and DART doesn't do a thing about it and the police officers don't enforce the law on there. Crime is number one.
All right, thank you. Joseph Miller, followed by Milce Hong. But Joseph, go ahead, Joseph.
Yeah, my name's Joseph Miller and after waiting five hours, it's Miller time. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Texas, amongst others. And the DART rail system, that opened here in Dallas in January the 14th, 1996. I remember it well because I was on the first train that drew in to the CBD from the West End. So I've worked all my life in rail and transit all over the United States. And the proposals that are getting put forward are absolutely crazy. We worked our tail off, myself and hundreds, thousands maybe even of designers, architects, engineers, and tradesmen to build the system for Dallas. And we did a very, very good job. You know what you've achieved economically, housing, access to jobs, education, all that kind of thing. That's what came about. What you're proposing is going to kill the DART system. There's an advert on TV that you see the guy messing about with some dip and his friend says to him, "Can you sleep? How do you sleep at night?" Well, that's the challenge I'm asking every single one of you. If you put that proposal forward, especially what you're going to do to the handicapped and disadvantaged people, I'm asking you, think about it. Look in the mirror. How do you sleep at night? Thank you.
Thank you. Milce Hong, I believe that's right. I might be wrong with that.
Hello. Yeah, this is Mike Hong. I'm living in Irving, Texas. I've been in Dallas for about more than 30 years. And I don't like ride DART until my daughter introduced me to DART, which I love it and it does, you know, provide great service. And I definitely oppose those changes. And you are devastating the people who have no choice dependent on it. And I, for me, I have a choice. Basically, you cut service, I cut DART. I don't take it anymore. I mean, if it doesn't make sense for me to take it, I won't take it anymore. So that's kind of, you know, people think it's a marriage. This is very bad for that kind of marriage to do this. And I feel like, you know, cut, 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 cut service, especially cut service, doesn't really do any good for DARTs. I would hope you can cut costs. Maybe, you know, using a smaller bus with only two people on the huge bus, it doesn't make sense. And maybe use technology, you know, innovation, use, you know, autonomous drive. And maybe also you can outsourcing some of the, you know, less driven, you know, ridership route to local business. And that may be more cost effective for them to do it. But anyway, I just feel like cutting costs and cutting routes, frequency, all that, will not serve anyone good in terms of ridership, in terms of DARTs. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send 146 forward. We'll have to make a card for, please state your name. Of course, thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Hong. Good. Okay, cool. We're from Irving and I did a lot of my school in Highland Park. I want to commend and everyone, I go, I want to commend and echo everyone before me, especially our neighbors from South Dallas and all those who have advocated for pair transit. Plenty of community members have already ably and beautifully spoken about the need for the DART. I'm speaking today as a college student out of state. I'm about to graduate and I'm looking for where I want to settle down and start my career. As someone born and raised here, I'd love to stay here. I'd love my friends from my college out of state to join me. We have so many opportunities here, but time and time again, the issue that has been raised has been the public transit. Young people don't want to sit in traffic for hours every day. Young people don't want to settle down somewhere where they know it will not be easy to make community or see the friends that they have. Dallas has the opportunities. We have the culture. We have the growth, but we do have nothing to hold against cities that have better transit, not to mention the fairs. Monthly unlimited passes in DC, Chicago, and Boston start at $72, $75, and $90 respectively. Our current local monthly pass is $126 for much less access. The proposed reduced pass for regional fairs is $96. I don't know how we can ever compete. Dallas will not be able to accommodate growth for the next 30 years because these cities can't balance their budgets this year. This is clearly an attempt to cut black brown and working people out of dignified life because of inefficiencies created by generations of previous cuts. And the resulting planned obsolescence is the death sentence, not only to many riders, but to the DART itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben Mendoza, followed by Kern Lee.
Good evening, Board. My name is Ruben Mendoza. I'm from a neighborhood just a few blocks north of Dallas's Pleasant Grove neighborhood. I'm here today to tell you I am against the general mobility plan and any caps or cuts to DART service. I'm a student at the University of North Texas. I commute all the way from Pleasant Grove at Lawnview Station, all the way to almost the end of the green line, and I hop on the A train and it takes me about three hours to get to school. But every day I go because it's way easier than driving and it takes the wear and tear off my car that has to get me through college. My mother is relying on DART on days where I have my car to go to work because she relies on three transfers to get to the school she teaches at. My sister takes the bus, the Route 15, to get to high school. My family needs DART. About a year ago, I came up and I spoke and I said some rather inflammatory words like, "A service cut would be a direct attack on my family." And for a while, I felt a little bad. I felt like maybe that was a bit dramatic. But after hearing the stories from all my neighbors and residents today of Dallas, I don't think so. I really do believe what someone said earlier, that blood money was the right term for this. People's lives are at stake to pay off people who don't want compromise. This is not their end goal. My sympathies for them left when I had to call my professor and tell them I had to miss class because I needed to go to Austin. I don't want to compromise with someone who fought tooth and nail to cut my day, to make it harder for me to get to school, to make it hard for my family to put a roof over my head and food on the table. All this is, this is not compromise. This is a payoff. Please. And to the board member who is shopping for glasses right now, get the ones in the middle. The other ones will make you look like Mr. Schlegel. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kern Lee, followed by Rubrilla Bragging.
Good evening. My name is Kern Lee. I'm a resident of Carrollton. And unlike a lot of people that have spoken today, my life does not, my day-to-day living, I don't have to take public transit. But I would like to take public transit, but I'm also a rational human being. So I do a mental calculation. How long does it take for DART versus driving? And then you kind of figure out, okay, I don't really like driving in the highway, but DART takes about 15 minutes more. But then I have to look for parking. So that kind of covers that time difference and you can kind of rationalize it. Now, my tolerance for that kind of rationalization, that kind of time difference, is higher than most. But, you know, when I explain that kind of stuff to them, I actually kind of convince people, hey, maybe trying DART is a good idea. That makes a lot of sense. It's not just an A to B distance type of thing. It's everything, right? And, but what happens when you say, oh, it's going to take 30 minutes more. It's going to take 40 minutes more. And that's exactly what the frequency reductions will do. And if you can't convince people who are in the DART member area, and I know part of the reason, part of the attacks that came to this organization was that DART cannot expand service, how are you going to convince those cities that this is a good idea? And that's something that DART has to do to be able to come back in two years and convince the legislature, hey, do not cut our funding or any of that sort. So, you know, many hours ago, one of my friends said, "Frequency is freedom." I'm also going to say that frequency is survival. You need to have frequency to convince people that DART needs to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriela Brugge.
You said it correctly, yes. Good evening. My name is Gabriela Brugge. I'm a Dallas resident and I work in social services. Thank you for providing this space and allowing us to be heard. I have utilized DART services since I was in second grade. And I would ride the bus home from Brandonburg Elementary in Irving. I have a lot of great memories because of DART and I want to thank all of you because the DART team are some of the best human beings that I know. They're always happy. They're helpful. They do their best to keep us safe and I'm truly grateful. While I think that Dallas is an incredibly resilient community, I am truly concerned about the increase in care for pair transit riders. The increase presents additional obstacles to their existence. I work with clients who utilize these services and are already struggling to make ends meet. To place more obstacles on their ability to exist and meet basic needs is not reflective of why this service exists in the first place. I ask that you please reconsider this proposed change. DART is one of the reasons why Dallas is such an amazing place to live and one of the reasons why our community is so strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Wong.
Good evening. What I would like to address is the fact that the frequency of the buses, this is going to be extended to an hour on some of the buses, and you said that the ridership is down. We're not facing the fact of what has happened in this country. We're not having come over the fact of COVID. The United States lost 2 million people from COVID. And most of the people that you lost were working class people that took public transportation. The poorest people in this country was affected most by COVID. So that is where the ridership is down because of the death in this country. We need to face that fact. Then the other thing that I want to talk about with the frequency is the fact that you're going to bump up against the city of Dallas with the housing. Dallas has a lack of affordable housing. And within their housing program, you have to have certain things within their program. It's called the Notice of Funding Availability. And in the fundability, it's called Equity Strategy Target Areas. And in this policy goal, it's called, there has to be certain availability of high-frequency public transit. Otherwise, the developers will not get the funding to have public affordable housing in this country, in the, excuse me, in the city of Dallas. And there's key issues that have to be in the package in order to get affordable housing. And there's points. There's 14 points that have to be to the developers. And the proximity to public transportation is one of them. And it shows whether the project is within one-fourth of a mile or a half of a mile of high-frequency transit stops. One hour is not a high-frequency stop. Also, it has to be proximity to grocery stores or drugstores. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would please send number 150 up and state your name and we'll get a card from you. Please.
Hello, my name is Maurice. Maurice Montgomery. Thank you for your time. Thank you. I understand, from my understanding, everyone here is a volunteer. So thank you for your service. So I like to look at things from a macroeconomics point of view. I'm a, work in the project management field and I understand everything has a cost. But I also understand in order for us to be successful, we have to share a lot of these costs. So we've heard about the pros and the cons, how it'll increase traffic, or it's good for traffic to have good public transit, how it's good for the environment, it's good for accessibility. Socio-economically, it's good. It's good for our health. Mentally, I use it because I just hate driving in traffic. And Texas traffic is really bad. So I kind of look at public transit almost like libraries. It's a lifeline of society. It's a way that everyone has access to a resource that we honestly should all have access to, right? So I wanted to give some solutions. I'm a policym- I'm a policy major. I wanted to offer some solutions based on what I know. I think this is a perfect time to be creative. I understand that we have to cut costs. You may have to cut costs. From my understanding, it's already been passed in March, the 5%. So right now, just trying to figure out where it's going to come from. I think we got to be creative. I think we have to optimize. We need to use AI. I'm going back to school for data science, and I think this is a great time for Dart and the city to start using AI and start using machine learning to optimize the routes. The Go app is a great place to start. You collect a lot of data off there, I'm sure. That's a great place to start. Take down some of the costs, think you can cut some things, review your contracts, make them longer-term. I think be creative, and by being creative, doing your jobs as politicians, making these deals, I think we can do a good job together.
Thank you. Tony Smoot. Maybe that's incorrect. I have 153. What number are you, sir?
I'm 151, Jake Caddoli.
Okay. We'll need to get a card.
So I'm addressing this to any advocates of Dallas's economy. I don't know if y'all answered more to the suburbs. This would make a lot of sense if you did, but I'm surprised by the way you're handling this, if you do advocate for Dallas. I want to, as someone with private equity, real estate experience for 15 years, just want to point out some basics. So high-income units, we're losing those to the suburbs already. Oak Cliff and the Cedars is some of the first places I've ever built where urban infill demand was lost because of the city being regressive south of 30. 80% of our buyers pretty much left their units within three years, and they were all in-migration buyers, moving from maybe places where they're used to, you know, more traditional cities. Transit-oriented mixed-use developments, obviously great for the economy. They're fueled by expansion of transit, not a contraction. People, landlord buyers, developers, they use news of expansion for marketing. What do you think they're going to do with this? No one's going to be bullish on Dallas when you're approaching situations like this with the solution of letting the suburbs roll over us. People from the north aren't coming here just to hang out with people from the north. It's just common sense. Traffic, people will tell you, transit helps traffic. It gives people options. Right now, if traffic gets worse, where are they going to go? Again, up north. And last thing, maybe this is less obvious, high-income buyers don't want segregation. They want to mix. You can look at East Dallas, you can look at Oak Cliff. People love being next to HUD housing. They don't like being next to, like McMansions or rundown apartment buildings. You want a mix of income levels. And so I guess the point of all this is, I want to approach this a little bit amorally, just from an economic perspective, because you've heard the moral arguments. I'm sure cities up north are thanking you, but I'm asking, who are you advocating for? Because this is completely serving their interests, and if the idea is you roll over every time there's opposition, then Dallas has no advocates. Thank you.
Tony Smoot would be the next speaker.
Yeah. Okay. My name is Tony Smoot, and I reside in the West Plano area. Firstly, I do want to say thank you for the services that are currently active, and I ask that you do not remove them at the rate that you are proposing. These changes will remove direct access from the West Plano legacy area to the Dart rail line in East Plano, which is detrimental and harmful to the community. West Plano area has experienced large-scale expansion and innovation with the buildings of the headquarters and legacy west areas. Whole families and communities have moved to the area to live, work, and develop it. I've witnessed Dart take amazing strides in providing more bus lines and access than I've ever seen in the last 15 years. And I do not want to witness us revert back to the difficulty of even navigating the city, let alone the monstrosity that is the DFW Metroplex. I am asking that you continue the 234 or 254 bus line that goes directly to the rail line connecting us to the hub of everything. What's already a 20-minute drive is almost an hour by bus alone. So if you remove the line, then you want us to be stranded and complaining, and we're going to have to come back here. We build the Silver Line only to remove access. We're building the Silver Line to go to the airport, so you want 1,000 people, their luggage, their kids, their dogs, then the luggage they forgot, to be stuck on a rail line. I don't know if y'all have been. I don't know how long it's been. I don't want to go ahead and say y'all don't do it. But we've already been having difficulty in rail lines being delayed, and the way it gets packed on the train is bananas. You're bringing another trail line to run it once an hour. That's bananas. And that's all I have to say. I've watched us take steps forward. I didn't know about all this Austin on y'all's back, but if y'all let Plano believe y'all, what the state going to do? And that's all I got to say. Thank you again.
Thank you. Regina, I have Regina Smoot as the next speaker. Yes.
Hello. My name is Regina Smoot Jackson. I am originally from St. Louis, Missouri. I moved here to Plano, and I felt like I was in heaven. I didn't even know the city existed. It was absolutely beautiful. It didn't have trees, and that scared me a little bit because I was like, we're not going to be able to breathe. It was kind of weird. Now they got trees. But what was most shocking is the limitation on the public transportation. I'm here to tell you that if you don't do anything else, you need public transportation to reach everywhere in America. So I thought that Texas was, you know, everything is bigger in Texas, but it's not because you've got limitations on your transportation. You need to be able to reach and stretch. And I would suggest that when you go to the roundtable and think about where all the buses are going to go, start with the major streets. For example, Preston, make sure it goes from one end of Preston to the other. If you do all the major streets, they'll connect, and it'll help people to kind of get to where they're going because you're accommodating all the major streets and it's covering the streets in between. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Hunter.
Hey, y'all. Good evening. My name is Courtney, and I live car-free in downtown. I have no desire to own a car or to drive, and I would intend to keep Dart as my primary form of transportation. DFW is one of the deadliest places to drive, and there is a growing demand for public transit. However, one of the biggest hurdles for increasing ridership is the lack of convenience. For example, if I want to go to Fort Worth for a concert, the TRE isn't even an option because it doesn't run past the time the concert ends. If we want to increase ridership and even decrease drunk-driving deaths, we need to extend service to 3:00 AM at least on weekends. Cutting routes and frequency will only reverse the progress we've made since the pandemic. The population in DFW will only continue to grow exponentially in times like this with talk of war tariffs. We need transportation freedom that is sustainable and affordable regardless of the cost of oil. I want to respectfully challenge you to push back on the cities that are struggling with their budget and spend the next two years proving the value Dart brings to the entire Metroplex. I believe we can increase ridership and support, especially with the completion of the Silver Line and FIFA coming next year. And I hope that tonight has been evidence as to how much people will show up and stay late to just give their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharm Sendar.
Good evening, and thank you, board members. My name is Sharm Sendar Ganesham, and I live in Frisco, Texas, 75035. I'm speaking in opposition to the 5% serving and service and funding cuts. This would affect me by potentially cutting routes 234 and 254, making it much harder for me to get to Dallas from Frisco, from North Plano. However, this is nowhere near the most important reason of how eliminating bus routes would affect commuters. First, paratransit and GoLink may potentially be cut. This would drastically make it harder for disabled people to commute, especially those in wheelchairs. Their trip either becomes longer or virtually impossible. Second, just in Plano, routes 234 and 254, the only routes that entirely stretch across North Plano, would potentially be cut. These two routes have over 720 riders per weekday combined, and you're cutting them. You're taking off higher capacity, more environmentally friendly CNG buses and replacing them with about 700 or more gasoline cars on Parker and Legacy. Traffic is already bad there. Commuting is already bad there. GoLink is already sort of struggling with its current capacity. And you're wanting over 700 more people per day in their own cars on the roads to make their commute longer, to leave a much larger environmental footprint, and have people need to wait much longer, commute for longer, potentially miss their entire GoLink trip because they arrived at the wrong pickup location, and on top of that, pay more. This would also make people struggle to not be able to get to work, to the doctor's office, to their friends, to their family, or grab food or groceries. I've also heard from some member cities looking to replace Dart with on-demand service. This is not viable at all, for the same reason we don't need 234, 254, or any bus route eliminated. It puts more cars on the road, causing more congestion. It makes people wait longer, it takes longer, and it's extremely inconvenient. It doesn't matter if people share the same GoLink vehicle. With a car event, it will never come anywhere close to the capacity of a bus or train. Voters approve Dart. Everyone approved the funding as a permanent mechanism for Dart. Voters rejected pull-up.
Thank you. Hexel Colorado.
Good evening. Thank you for waiting. My name is Hexel Colorado. I'm a Dallas resident, and, well, you know where I stand. If, we were all there in Austin. We saw, and I understand and sympathize with why you're considering this 5% GMP, but you guys must know by now that it will not protect you in the next legislative session. And we know this because when, back in Austin, Representative Shaheen knew about this 5% proposal, and he said, quote, "It does not fix this solution long-term. It is a temporary offer," end quote. And if you think passing this compromise will change its tune, you would still be wrong, because three years ago, this board allocated $234 million back to member cities. Yet this year in Austin, nobody mentioned that. And this 5% cut, $234 million got you no favors from Plano and Irving, and this 5% cut will only do harm. If you're worried about Plano exiting, when the question was posed point-blank to Mayor John Muns of Plano, he had a lot of things to say about Dart, but one thing he did say is, quote, "In 2026, we have the ability to withdraw, but that is not our intent," end quote. In three hours of testimony, not once was Plano exit threatened. So if you pass this cut, no one will remember why you did it. In the next legislative session, your allies and your opponents alike will only remember that you chose to hurt hundreds of thousands of loyal riders. You chose to cut routes and reduce frequency the same year as the World Cup and the Silver Line opening. You chose to eliminate micro-transit in South Dallas and paratransit for 70% of riders with disabilities. If you want protection from the state, it will not come from appeasing a handful of state politicians. It'll come from the people here who have spoken to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. James Truitt.
Hello. My name's James Truitt. I live right next to White Rock Lake. And I think one thing that some have brought up already is the World Cup is going to happen soon around here. And I mean, the world's eyes are going to be on us, and we're cutting one of the most amazing things that Dallas has to offer, or, well, we're proposing to cut it. And, I mean, that just seems like a very bad idea to me. Public transit throughout the world is just seen as like a very normal thing. Like, it's strange to go somewhere that's considered a well-developed country and just have to be in a car everywhere you go. Like, it should be normal for me to go anywhere in Dallas and be able to take a train or a bus wherever I need to go. I shouldn't have to have a car. I shouldn't have to, I don't know, walk out in the 100-degree weather over here. And we need to do, if anything, we need to be expanding Dart's access to anyone who could be here. And during the World Cup, I worry that a lot of people are going to come here, and they're just going to be like, wow, look at Dallas. We're the laughingstock of the world in public transit because we can't get where we need to go. That'd be a real disappointing thing for potentially billions of eyes to be on us. And right then and there, we don't have the funding we need to provide them the ridership that they need. There are a lot of vulnerable people here tonight who've already stated a lot of moral arguments against that. But I think, I don't know, I don't want people thinking about Dallas and laughing at us, so at least think of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Baucham.
Good evening. My name is Charles Baucham. I'm a car-free resident of downtown Dallas, and I am here to state my opposition to cuts in Dart service to fund the aforementioned 5% general mobility program. I'm specifically against reductions in service to TRE, which I use to commute to work, light rail, and buses. I'm against the removal of GoLink zones, especially in communities such as South Dallas. And I am especially against dramatic increases to fares on paratransit services, which will force already vulnerable people to make life-or-death decisions. As 161 people have said, or have wanted to say and had to leave in front of me, cutting Dart funding now will not make service better. It will not improve quality of life in Dallas or the surrounding cities, and it will not stop cities like Plano and Irving from doing the exact same thing in the future. I wanted to make a, emphasize a point that was made earlier. This is the first piece of legislation I've ever seen that's so bad that communists and Republicans have agreed. I think it was, the person who said that earlier is still in the audience, but it's still something I think should be mentioned because in a day where bipartisanship is so rare, it's definitely an interesting thing. But at the end of the day, there's a lot of problems with Dart, but I think the last thing we need is to reduce critical service in vulnerable communities to fund empty services and affluent ones. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amit Banerjee.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Amit Banerjee. I'm a Collin County resident, and I want to thank you all for your resilience and staying up, hearing and authentically listening to all the people that have come on a day like this. Because on a day like this, I support Dart. On a day like today, I oppose the proposed service changes. On a day like today, July 8, 2025, Dart kept me dry from the pouring rain. On a day like today, the 8th of July, Dart got me to work from Plano via Express 308 and got me to all my off-site meetings today via the red and blue lines on time. On a day like today, but a little more like a day in 2019, Dart kept me connected to my city after I had a seizure and couldn't operate a vehicle for three months. On a day like today, but a little more Irish, Dart got so many people to the Dallas-St. Patrick's Day parade, where I actually met my girlfriend. On a day like today, I know that decreases in rail frequency actually make it harder to get bus transfers. On a day like today, I recognize that when it's post 7:00 PM and it's a little darker, you might feel a little more unsafe waiting for a bus that's taking longer to get there. On a day like today, surrounded by hundreds of regular people and likely voters that are wanting expansions to Dart, not cuts, who want more Dart, not less, Dart remains the anchor for why people choose DFW as a place to live and work. On a day like today, faithful to the idea that good people in good positions of power will do good works, Dart is at risk of hurting everyone from Collin County to Ellis County. And on a day like today, optimistic about the Dart Board's decision, I oppose the proposed general mobility plan's implementation. On a day like today, trusting you, I proudly support Dart. Thank you.
Jacob Tab.
Hello, everyone, and good night. My name is Jacob Tab, and I am a Dallas resident. I ride the TRE every so often that I get the chance to go to work. I enjoy it. It helps others, other drivers on the roads, because it takes me off the road and reduces congestion. But I will be okay if frequency is reduced, which is what these changes would put forward. However, as evidenced by tonight, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of other people that would not be okay if these changes go forward. They could lose their paratransit, their freedom. They could lose access to dialysis, medical care, access to hospitals. Their livelihoods are threatened, and they've expressed that tonight. All I would ask is that, when you go home tonight, you think, what if you lost your transit access? What if suddenly tomorrow, you didn't have access to your vehicles or whatever other forms of forms of transit you use? What if you didn't have a backup option? For these reasons, I strongly encourage you to not go forward with these transit cuts, and reductions, and price increases, and other elements of the GMP. Thank you.
Kay Shet.
The last name is Shet. And I'm a resident of Irving, Texas. I've lived in Irving since I was three years old, but I did live in New York City for eight years, I also lived in Chicago for eight years. Those were considered very expensive cities to live in. For me, it was a wonderful financial break because I did not have to have a car. I left my car at my parents' house in Irving. I had two children within two years. By the time they were one and two years old, I was a single parent. And I want to say tonight, our country has two major crises. One is that families do not have time. They don't have time for their families, and a lot of our youth are showing the effects of that. The other thing is that we have a high rate of inflation that's getting higher all the time, and DART is not helping it at this time. It's not DART's first, I mean, it's not their, it's not DART's fault. DART has done miraculous things within the 40 years that it's been in existence. How many cities have been able to implement four light rail lines from scratch, plus all the other services that DART provides? They need more. The whole country needs more. We need to stop the traffic coming in that is so expensive for our cities. Also, I'd like to emphasize that 90-plus percent of our population in the United States is low-income people. 50% of those are single parents, and they need help. They are doing the best they can, they support everything within our system, they build things in construction, they maintain our buildings. Our Chamber of Commerce, through the second referendum election previous to that, they did a survey of the large corporations in Irving and asked them if they wanted to keep DART within the system. They overwhelmingly said yes. Some of them were having to hire private transit services to pick up their employees. And at that time, our Dallas, our Irving Chamber of Commerce got behind the, how do I want to say, got behind DART to keep it in Irving. We voted for the establishment of DART. Number two, we voted for the first referendum for DART. Number three, we voted for the second referendum for DART. So the residents have spoken over and over and over, and it is this plague between the suburbs in Dallas that is...
Thank you. Next speaker is DeDonna Carter.
Good evening, almost good night, but I'm here today not only as a paratransit user, but also as a hospital social worker, working with vulnerable patients who rely on transportation services for life-saving care. My prayer is that our words, I know it's been a long night, but that our words are not falling on deaf ears, but that you hear with an open mind and an open heart to all that has been shared. I live in Dallas because of DART, that's why I chose Dallas, and I chose to remain in Dallas. We thought about moving a year ago because of the accessibility with transportation. And I've lived in various parts of the country and used paratransit services, and DART, it's, I love DART. And as a user of the Uber Pilot program, for the first time, when I started using that, I no longer had to wait an hour to drop my kids off from school and then have to wait, wait an hour for a paratransit to pick me up. Now I can use that service where I take my children to school, then I go to work, and I'm able to be a more contributing member of society and just being able to do the things that I need to do. So the services, if we were to cut those services, I mean, I use paratransit four times a day, so that would take me up to $600 in a month's time, which is quite a bit. But I just wanted to say that, you know, I thought of the movie, If You Build It, They Will Come. And if you tear it down, then we lose ridership. And so I just want to, just to echo that, is what everyone shared. Paratransit, or transportation in general, it's not a luxury, it's a lifeline. And at any time, it's not a matter of if, but it's when. When will you be on the other side of this desk, on the other side of this podium? Whether it impacts you, or a family member, or a child, or a parent, we all are getting older, and we all have different needs, and I just pray that you hear these things and heed them. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Xavier Morelles.
Good night, members of the DART, and also for the crowd in the hearing. Thank you all for coming. I'm a student from Dallas College, and I'd like to speak on behalf of all the people, not only from my college, but from everybody here. My discomfort and overall just not being happy, really sad about it, the change of frequency that is going to be on the routes, personally me affecting the Route 47, which, to be honest, is practically God's sent route for me, since it takes me from my home to my work and all here from college, and I basically take all the three routes, being the bus, golings, and train, I use all three of them to transport me around the Dallas district. And another thing about it was also regarding the frequency as well, along with the GoPass apps, the inconsistency of the information provided by them, being saying that shows supposed to come maybe at like 1:00 p.m., but it ends up showing that 15, 20 minutes later, sometimes it happened to me, hold like a whole hour later than the time being said. I would really appreciate if it could get, I don't know, people, somebody, technicians working on the app to have a more accurate time regarding the transportation that. It would help me a lot, because I have been late to classes, late to work, and all around just help the, not only me, but all the people here from Dallas, if that got, be able to be fixed. Also, with the fare cap increase, that was increased around $30, I believe, in March, and now having a new increase to the fares in little less than a year is just crazy, to be honest. And although Dallas does provide a student pass for me, there are times in vacations that I still need to work, even though I won't attend a college, that I will still need to pay for those times. So if you could just reconsider this, I would really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Rochelle.
My name is Rochelle Ray, and I live in South Oak Cliff, 75232. I come to you tonight not on my own behalf, but for my neighbor, a woman who name I regrettably do not even know, but I see her struggle daily. She walks, rain or shine, from the bus stop to her job next door as a home healthcare worker. She wears scrubs, she carries heavy bags, and she move with the kind of tired grace that says that she has done this many times before. She is the reason I'm speaking out against the proposed DART fare increases and route changes. Let me be clear, these changes do not impact my life at all. I have no reason to be here. I have reliable transportation, and I'm privileged enough not to have to take the bus to work, to school, to even drop off children. But I live in a community where many do, and I love the community in which I live. I am speaking because the people affected most by these changes are the ones who have the least to say. They are the workers who keep the city running, caring for the sick, cleaning offices, cooking meals, watching children. They are already navigating long commutes, unreliable schedules, and limited service areas, increasing the cost of transit, and rerouting access away from the places they live and work add insult to injury. These changes do not shift routes, they shift lives. They widen the gap between those who can afford comfort and those who are just trying to survive. We cannot allow public transportation, something that should be a bridge towards equality, to become another barrier. So no, I am not here for me. I am here for my neighbor and for everyone like her. I urge you all to reconsider this proposition, not because they affect my convenience, but they affect people's livelihoods. Thank you.
Jacob Shing.
My name is Hakan, and I'm a lifelong Dallas citizen. Like thousands of other working Texans, I ride DART to get to my job and my family. Today, I speak as a taxpayer and a proud member of the Texas chapter of the American Communist Party. These cuts aren't just policy, they are deliberate class warfare, moneyed interests and bankers using transit as another method of war against the working families behind me. $42 million stolen from buses to fund private Uber rides for the wealthiest neighborhood in Texas. They're doubling paratransit fees for the elderly. That is not austerity, that's theft. But should we beg thieves, to be fair? No. Asking for more money from the city might get us a short-term win, but what about next time they do the same tactic against us? We're here because we know the truth, that working people built the city. We're not just passive consumers or voting constituents, we are the Dallas people, and together we have agency and power. So how do we, together, make the city feel that we mean business? We organize transit defense committees in every neighborhood, map out who's stranded, mobilize church vans, union halls, and your neighbor's pickup truck. We'll get each other to work. Not one disabled rider should be paying $6 for paratransit, not one. We occupy every DART meeting until they pull back on these cuts. Bring your folding chairs and your children, this is our house. Look, we're not arguing for a perfect world. In the real world, people solve their own problems and don't rely on begging city officials for change. Local leadership is either working for you or against you. And who do you think this leadership is working for? These are our buses, our lines, our city. I'm from the American Communist Party, the working people have spoken. Let's connect after this meeting and start solving our own problems.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mary Lucas.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lucas. I am a resident of Dallas County. I am here on others' behalf. Thanks to, I believe it's Ms. Kraus, we, I attend Concord in Dallas Church, and it was brought up at that point that you all were having this hearing, and it really hit my heart. I am not personally going to be affected by this proposal. I'm against it. I am a nurse case manager for those that are vulnerable, those that are using that paratransit. I make home visits, I'm helping them coordinate their biggest barrier, which is transportation, access to life, to their health. And I have seen in the last couple of years how that paratransit has really opened up their opportunities in their livelihood, and taking that lifeline away is going to be devastating. I can't even imagine, I know, I have numerous newer stories about that. I'm also coming as a nurse who used to wake up using the transportation system, but in St. Louis. I lived there for 17 years. I'm a single mom of five kids. I woke up at 4:30, at 3:30 in the morning, got them together, left at that 3:34 time to walk two to three miles down the line to take a bus. From that bus, I took to the rail line, from the rail, then I took it to my shift. I got there about 6:45, I had to walk again, about a mile or two. I did that for four years. That was a huge, it was a lot, but it was also such a relief, that I had something to rely on. And when I looked to move down here, that's what I looked for, was I had, was DART. DART was a support. Unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, I did not need to use it, but I knew that it was there. So I am, no cuts, please do not decrease, and thank you.
Thank you. Wayman Young.
Oh, let's see, Wayman Young, from northwest Dallas, I live over there by the Love Field Airport. We're about 15 minutes away from midnight here, so good morning, I guess. I guess the rare unicorn of somebody who actually supports this plan is not going to show up for this meeting. I'm just going to tell you my personal story of, I got here today around 5:00 p.m. I left my house, walked two miles over to the rail station at Botina Station, rode all the way down here, and for some strange reason, I couldn't get out of the doors when it stopped at the Acart Station, it actually dropped me off three stations down, and so I had to walk through the pouring rain, and I've got soaking socks here and kind of freezing, to basically tell you that I'm against this plan as well. I've had a love-hate relationship with DART. I used it in high school, it was the 51 Wallon Hill, I would go to downtown Dallas, and it helped me when I was studying for SAT courses. I've used it off and on when I tried to go to jury duty. And I guess basically what I'm trying to say here is that, one of the things that hasn't been considered is, this could be the breakdown of law and order if you get rid of this and get rid of the frequency of the routes. Dallas already has a poor attendance record when it comes to jury duty, and this would just make it non-existent. Then on top of that, you have to say, people talk about the traffic, but it's the quality of traffic that will go downhill. You have people right now who, when they don't have access to proper transit, they are riding, they're driving cars on anti-seizure medication, they're driving cars with suspended licenses, they're driving junky cars. And so when you cut this, or when you cut the frequency, you're going to get an increase of that bad quality traffic. You're going to get people with cars that are basically falling apart, people who have no business driving, and that's what you're going to see an increase of if you go through with this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patrel Lawrence.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a North Texas resident, I mean, North Texas native, current Princeton, Texas resident. My daughter and I traveled an hour and a half to make it. A little bit of background, I rode DART majority of my life. DART was a saving grace for me, I would not be who I am if it had not been for DART getting me to and from. To think some people may wake up and not have a route, or not be able to pay a spiked fare increase is heartbreaking. Today, I stand in solidarity with everyone who is against these changes. I represent those who could not make it today. I stand as an example of someone who made it because of DART. I am by saying this, it's extremely important that we, as people, never get to a place where we lose compassion for another person's struggle. It doesn't have to be your struggle for you to care or do something. Life is bigger than self. We must always remain for the people and be willing to stand up for what's right when it's time. DART, from the bottom of my heart, I ask you to please reconsider these changes, no cuts or fare changes. Do what's right for the people, because they are the foundation to your business. Their voices matter. Honor the people by doing what's right for them.
Thank you. Sharon Bornstein.
My name is Sharon Bornstein. Now, am I going to, how am I going to know when my time, okay, I'll know when the time's up. Okay. I think you all have heard enough with close to 200 people saying, you know, the reasons why they're against this, so... So this fare increase, you know, all these cuts. So what I'd like to talk to, about today, is I was actually told I could talk about it, is about something that happened to me and the point is that I was robbed at the Southwest Medical District Parkland Station on, in mid-April. And a big part of what contributed to that was the lack of security. There was already another person that mentioned about crime. There was no additional security nor police officers at a station that's very dangerous. A Southwest Medical District is one of the worst stations that there is and there's no security. Whereas for example, at Park Lane Station, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM every night during the week, there is extra contracted security and that, they're armed, that is a deterrent to crime, okay? So the problem is that DART has the resources with police and extra contracted security, it's, they have too many people at some places and not enough at other places. For example, at West End Station, that is full of DART police and tons of them. And I tried to get to this meeting, the April meeting, and I did not make it in time for the board meeting, but I did talk to Chief Cato, Charles Cato, and Lieutenant Veronica, I think her name's Crystal Parker, outside there. Is that my time?
That's it.
Okay. There's not enough security at the, at the Parkland Road and at various places. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Simon Massey.
Hello, counsel. I know it's late, I'm going to keep this short. I own a business, I own two restaurants in Dallas and Mesquite. A lot of my employees use the DART. I'm opposed to the 5% GMP and the planned increases. I'm a resident of Plano. I see a lot of hospital workers 11:00 PM, 12:00 AM in the morning, right off of where the Baylor Health Hospital is, I see them waiting on the DART. If you reduce or increase the time frequency to one hour, they'll be waiting more than that. I'm also, my parents are residents of Garland, so I've talked to Ed Moore, who's the councilman of District Three, he's very much for DART, you know, Garland gets like so much benefits out of it. And even yesterday, Dylan Hedrick, which is our new mayor, he completely was supportive of DART. And I know I've had data come out with me to one of the meetings for Garland, I'm a member of DSA, I'm a member of Sunrise Movement, I'm a member of the Texas Democratic Small Business Caucus, so I'm a member of all these organizations and they all love DART. So you need to do everything you can to save DART and, you know, if the cities have problems, instead of going behind our backs, going to state representatives, going to state senators, you need to ask the city, the cities need to have a referenda, just like they've had previously, but you are too afraid to do the right thing. So I'm asking you to do the right thing. If you have problems, go to your cities, have a referenda, have an election and see what they say. Do they agree with DART or do they want to save DART or do they want to leave DART? And if you want new ideas, you need to go to the 26 other cities that aren't members and see if they want to be members, like the city of Mesquite or other cities. Because I'm sure that there is a good, like good value, a good ROI for DART being in those members, in those cities. So thank you.
Thank you. Robert Zott.
Thank you. My name's Robert Zott and I'm from Plano. As you can see, a lot of us Planoites do support DART. People who need this system the most do not deserve to have their crucial services cut. I understand you all are in a difficult position because of the loss of funding from the suburbs could kill the system, but cutting these services, especially to vulnerable areas in Dallas and Plano, will not help this solution. Twenty-minute peak bus and rail frequencies on the busiest routes and one-hour peak weakened bus frequencies for most routes isn't going to make the system unusable. If you're going to miss your connection, your entire day is now ruined, you're going to be late for work. Hour frequencies for the silver line will attract no riders and render the line pointless. To have the silver line fail will just be a self-fulfilling prophecy for those who against DART to say that DART doesn't work, even though it would be the GMP champion by the suburbs that caused it. A system that doesn't work will cause people to leave the system. People will stop using DART, which will just compound financial problems for the agency. I ask you to reconsider your funding cuts and try to find a better solution. See how to convince suburbs like Plano, where I'm from, that DART adds value, that bus is like the 254 that, as you've heard, 700 people use in a day. I ride and support that bus, can be used to get to the airport or work in Dallas by using the silver or red lines and save a lot of money on parking for us Planoites. To those on the board representing Plano, I want you to know that as you have seen tonight, the citizens of Plano do support DART and we do not support the GMP. From conservatives to liberals, we do not support the city council's actions to defund DART and we will be vocal. I can't believe we're going to get a new rail line, our city is determined that's not enough. The buses and trains are clean, secure and on time and the red line is packed with Planoites coming home every day. DART is in a crucial period and I ask you now, what choice do you want to make? Don't go with a 5% cut that's going to cause this agency to fail long-term. Choose for Dallasites and Planoites who needs to be a secure system long-term and keeping service where it's at is crucial for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Zott, Scott.
I've had about six hours to kind of change what I'm talking about, but it's very relevant. So Alex Scott, District Nine, there's a question that's been posed tonight. Is anyone here speaking in favor of these proposals? That would be me, right? I moved here to Dallas due to the corporations that y'all attracted. I haven't used DART in about five years, I'm a liquid homeowner and I also own a car, yet I stand in solidarity with my neighbors in opposition to the service and fare changes. But why? Because just like those sitting in front of me and those behind me, my education has shaped my moral compass, which is that of the Auburn creed. And I'd like to use my time to share the creed and my prayer for this board as y'all head into deliberations. I believe that this is a practical world and that I can count only on what I earn, therefore I believe in work, hard work. I believe in education, which gives me the knowledge to work wisely and trains my mind and my hands to work skillfully. I believe in honesty and truthfulness, without which I cannot win the fellow, the respect with and confidence of my fellow men. I believe in a sound mind, in a sound body, in a spirit that is not afraid and in clean sports that develop these qualities. I believe in obedience to the law because it protects the rights of all. I believe in the human touch, which cultivates sympathy with my fellow men, and mutual helpfulness that brings happiness for all. I believe in my country because it is, because it is a land of freedom and because it is my own home and that I can best serve that country by doing justly, loving mercy and walking humbly with my God. And because Auburn men and women believe in these things, I believe in Auburn and love it. And as you head into deliberations, the prayer that I'm lifting up to every single person here is that I pray that you are given clear discernment on the path that most truly reflects the justice, the mercy and the humble walk that you have with your God. Finally, if anyone here is in extreme displacement from this evening's meeting's length, please find me and I will do everything in my will to get you home. Thank you.
Thank you. Radia Fort.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Radia, is pronounced Radia, last name Fort. I know we're going to run out of time here this evening and I wasn't prepared to say anything, I wasn't going to say anything, but I just thought that I would speak a little bit for the city of Dallas, I know we're going to run out of time, so. My name is Radia, I'm not from Dallas, Texas, but I, five years ago, April 2020, I moved here and I said, oh, okay, I'll move to Dallas, I was offered housing. I was kind of raised here in the summers of Dallas, I always, not Dallas, but to the state of Texas. I always left Texas when I was growing up and I said, oh, okay, I'm going to move here really quickly. And, you know, so I learned the system when I got here, I was like, oh, it's overwhelming. I've been to many cities, LA, New Jersey, New York, Chicago, just to name a few. And so the transit system, you know, you know, there is a little, you know, there's some similarities, but of course, we are country-state, so I get that and I understand that it's a country-state, so there's going to be some differences. But I think I speak for the majority of the people and I'm going to agree with the people of the city right now and I really think that you guys should look at the bigger picture because, you know, if you cut, if you cut some of the money, the fares and the things that the people that they need for the city, I'm here for them, I support them, I support everybody. This is not just for black, brown, it's for all colors or for all people. I think it's really going to hurt them and I think that they need, you know, they need a little help to get around the city, to go places and, you know, get where they need to go, to the stores, medicals and all those type of things. So I don't think that that would be a great idea moving forward, the bigger picture, you know, just to, to make your city better because I like this, I like your city. There's some things, you know, every city has its own problems, I got six Texans left, like good luck and I hope that you guys at the end of the day make things better for your city, so. Good luck, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, is there anyone here who would like to submit a written comment for the record? If you do, please do so quickly. Do we need any of the other transition translations?
Alguien quisiera entregar este, un comentario escrito para que conste en la acta?
No, go ahead. So, any comments made after the close of this public hearing will not be part of the record for these proceedings. Since there are no additional speakers or written comments, I took turn in. At this time, I would like to thank you, all those who were in attendance, for their participation in this public hearing and I officially close this at midnight. We had some general comments left over, but I, do we have a Tarista Delago or a Mary Lou Paris or a Jake Cadale? They left, okay. Well, thank you so much, it's been a long evening, but it was a worthwhile evening as well. I believe we had 171 speakers, that was very good. And we will take all this and meet on August 1st. So, if we no more comments or public comments, I adjourn this meeting at midnight. Thank you.